All right, we're all here now. Our city clerk has a brief statement she needs to make on public participation.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the building is closed. However, our residents still have several ways to watch the meetings because at work sessions, we do not allow public comment. They can view the meetings using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using the Granicus software. The public may always also contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight. And of course, I'm going to remind council once more, the staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. Tonight's work session will cover the city manager's recommendation for the FY 2021 annual budget and the FY 2021-2025 capital improvement plan. But we're going to start out with our finance manager, budget and research, Lori Wiganra. Lori?
Thank you. I will, there is quite a bit of material that we normally go through in this. And I will let you know that we do have a work session also scheduled for next Monday. We have some of the department heads here. Usually I have that whole team backing us up here. If for some reason I'm unable to answer a question, or we don't have somebody here who can answer a question, our plan would be to bring those back next week at the work session as well. And then also just a reminder, if anybody wants a break, you know, let's speak up and say we need to break. And if I do not pause at a time you need me to, just let me know and I'll let you know if we only have one more slide to go or something like that.
Thank you.
All righty. So, yeah, I gotta bring this thing up. I haven't done this in a while. Okay. So, which one's gonna work? So what I wanted to do is kind of give you an overview of how we're going to approach talking about the budget with you. It's a little bit different this year than we normally organize it. So we're gonna start by kind of talking about the framework we use to develop this budget. Obviously, there was a big change in the, near the end of the normal process. So we'll kind of talk about what happened or what changed, and then how we adapted to that moving forward. Then I'll just give you a kind of a high-level overview of the total city budget. And last year, when we talked to you about the CIP and the supplementals, we incorporated it with the conversation about each department. This year, we're gonna go ahead and just talk to you about the CIP by itself rather than with each individual department. And also, we're gonna cover it first because it is the biggest part of the budget. And then we'll do the enterprise funds after that. It's, they're always at the end. I don't know about you, but I'm usually tired by the time we get there, so I thought we'd move them up this time and leave the end of the presentation for the general fund part of the budget that is the most severely impacted by the pandemic, reactions to the pandemic. And so we'll walk through that in a little bit more detail at the end. At the very end, I'll let you know how we did on financial policy compliance. I always go too fast on these. So just to kind of give you the environment that we're building the budget in, we, you know, the city, we work with the departments and with the executive team, the budget office worked together, starting in the fall, to start developing the base budget and submit supplemental requests and CIP cost estimates and new project requests. So on about March 5th, the executive team met and basically had come up with their kind of first draft of what they would recommend as a budget that the budget team took back and was trying to pull together for them. And then on March 11th, the WHO declared the pandemic. The next day, MLB canceled spring training. So on March 12th, we knew we'd already lost $900,000 in direct revenues from the ticket sales and the concessions at spring training. And on that same day, the governor declared a public health emergency in Arizona. By the 16th, the president declared his first 15-day, you know, avoid contact kind of thing. And then Arizona schools were closed through March 27th. On the 19th, California declared their shelter-in-place order. And then by the end of the month, our governor also declared a stay-at-home order and closed the schools for the balance of the year. It was on the 17th of March that the executive team met and to review that initial budget. At that point in time, we delayed the budget adoption process for as long as we could. So normally, we would have already been here having these conversations with you by now. So we pushed the process back as long as we could within state law and our council meeting calendars and worked on developing a new framework for how we would balance the budget. So the areas that are most impacted by the results of the responses to the pandemic are sales tax revenues and the ongoing general fund. That makes up, in the general fund, our sales tax are almost 50%. The non-construction portion are almost 50% of our ongoing general fund revenue. And another 8% of our revenue comes from state shared sales taxes. Those taxes are derived from local resident spending, business spending, you know, on things like retail, restaurant and bar, hotels, entertainments, obviously, all areas that were significantly impacted by some of the events that occurred in March. And a lot of the events generate other spending in our community. So that's why this was of concern and is of concern to the city. And just to remind you, sales tax information is, has about a five to six-week lag. I was just checking today with our revenue analyst on where we are. Essentially, just to give you the background, the state, you know, your tax returns due, I think, on the 25th, but you really have till the end of the month to file it electronically. So as of Friday, or as Thursday, people were able to file their returns. But then the state takes about, till about the 10th, to process all those transactions and get us reporting. So that means hopefully by next week, we'll have that information on March, but it will really be mid-June before we have information on what happened in April, which is the critical month. So the other, so, did I skip one? Nope. The, talked a little bit about, so we initially, we went through and made changes to the revenue estimates was the first thing we did in the middle of, in the middle of March. What we did is adjust sales taxes, and I'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of how we made those changes later in the presentation. But essentially, for the last couple of months of FY 20 and all of FY 21, we reduced general fund revenues by about $12.3 million from what we were planning earlier in March. So that helped advise the, how we would move forward with making a budget recommendation. We also received state shared revenues from gas taxes. And of course, and that's what we call HERF, the highway user revenue, and that pays for streets-related activity. Obviously, telecommuting and stay-at-home orders are impacting the miles that are being driven and the gallons of gas being purchased. So that's another area where we did estimate some revenue loss was in the HERF fund. That ultimately impacts the general fund because the HERF does not support all of our streets expenses. So that, that is another impact to the general fund. At the same time, we have some new expenses. So far, they aren't significant. We're tracking the extra expenses we're having because of the response to the COVID situation. We won't have direct access to any type of federal stimulus funding under the current scenario, but we believe we'll be able to be reimbursed for some of our expenses. So we've had our staff diverted to trying to figure out new ways to do what we do, as well, have had a little bit of extra expenses that is also impacting the cities in some ways. Don't like using the mouse to do this. Come on, okay. So the framework that we came up with in the middle of March was that our, for developing the budget recommendations, and was to do everything we can to maintain current programs and services, to continue the capital program, and I'll talk a little bit more about why that's important, that we want to continue to fairly compensate our employees as we went through the process of developing the budget. We decided that we should focus first on must-do budget additions, things that we're contractually obligated to do, such as reimbursing people who've already given us infrastructure and the capital projects. We have a couple of significant capital projects under construction and plan to open, and opening those projects is a priority as well. Also, we want to make sure we address the council's highest priorities. You've talked to us about those a number of times, including at the retreat in January. And then we felt it was very important that we build in the ability to absorb further revenue declines and/or higher costs that we might come run into as we move forward. I'll remind you several times in this presentation that these revenue estimates were developed in an environment of high levels of uncertainty. And they were also developed in the middle of Mar, second half of March, before things like the governor doing the stay-at-home order. So we're anxiously awaiting getting some of that real data to see, to see what's happening. So that, any questions on just the generic, the kind of the approach we use to coming forward with a budget recommendation?
Questions? All right, you can just proceed.
Okay. So I thought what I'd do first is kind of go over the materials you received, your book that we normally do, because most of us aren't working in the office. The tabs don't have the names on them, so there's numbers on them, but the table of contents lets you know what's there. But I just want to call attention to a couple of things. One of the things, tab four has the department's budgets. And as I mentioned before, last year when we gave this book to you, we had a page for the supplementals and a page for the CIP-related activity in the individual department budgets. This year, we pulled those out, and there's a tab on supplementals and another on the CIP. But just to give you an idea of the data that's in here, I'm looking at page nine in tab four, and that's the Development Services Department write-up. What it provides you is kind of a description of department, what it does, what its organizational units are. It includes a department budget overview, which gives you a basic description of kind of how their budget that we're proposing compares to, the FY 21 proposed budget compares to the FY 20 budget. And we identify any, if there are supplementals in the department, what those supplementals are. And then also, we would mention if there's any significant capital projects that that department is responsible for. The other information that we've previously published in the final budget document are performance measures. So on page 13 for the Development Services Department, this year, we've brought the performance measures to you now at this point in the process. And the manager's office was a great proponent and organizer of working with departments to have them focus on starting to develop new measures to include in the budget. So as you go through here, some of these, you may find that there's not historical information, and that's because the department's spent some time thinking about, what is it that is, I should be monitoring to know that I'm doing what everybody wants us to do? So that's just kind of giving you an idea of what's in there for the individual departments. And always, if you have questions later on, after you have a chance to look at this, you know, always give us, get those questions to us and we'll follow up with you. So just, the big, the big, the big numbers. The budget is just shy of $590 million. Again, quite a bit of that is associated with the capital program. About a third of the budget, if you can see the colors on the pie chart, those shaded in purple are the general fund pieces of the puzzle of the, of the budget. And that is about a third of the city's total budget. Oops. I worked that time. And then to show you where the money comes from, or where the, where that, where the money goes, a big chunk of that budget, as you can see, about almost 60% is the CIP this year. And this does reflect the carryovers from this year into next year for projects like the surface water plant that is a multi-year project. So that's why we decided we're gonna focus on the CIP first, since it's the biggest chunk of what you're looking at. So as we approached the CIP, I'm gonna first give you a little bit of update on where we are with this year's CIP. We told you we were delivering a budget that would be a CIP that we could deliver on time and on budget, and so talk a little bit about where we are on that. I'll kind of give you a high-level overview again of the dollars associated with the five-year CIP. Talk about the highlights of some of the key projects. We're not gonna go through every project, but there is a CIP section in this document where you can see, I believe it's in section six, where you can see every capital project requested by a department, what we're recommending, and then if there is, if, I think if you look at, I got a page marked here, in tab six, if you look at page nine, you can see information technology. You can see the project that is included in the CIP for them, which is called Lucidity, some improvements to Lucidity out in '23. And then below there, there's a note of a project that they did request in the process, and what the cost, estimated cost range of that project was, and some comments on why it was not included in the CIP. In this case, they just didn't have adequate scope prepared yet to be able to effectively cost the project. And we, our position is, if you don't have a good enough scope, you can't fully cost the project, so we don't include them. So I'd expect to see that come back in a future year from the department. And then we will go over this, as I mentioned, a little, a little bit more then about other changes to the five-year CIP that is in place now. And with, through the debt service in the CIP, because it's really about funding, it's paying the bonds that were used to build prior CIP projects or ones that we're building now. Sometimes it goes, sometimes it doesn't. In terms of how we're doing on our current CIP, I just want to give you a little bit of background. I know you've had quarterly reports from the engineering department, and a lot of the information I'm sharing with you is drawn from their, their tracking. We did institute a system of regular monthly meetings that are attended by the city manager's office executives, by the departments, the project managers, budget staff and procurement staff, where we talk about the status of projects, where they are. We focus primarily on projects that are being completed and/or any that may be facing challenges, and talk about how we're dealing with those challenges. As part of that, we implemented a change reporting and tracking system where there's a form that's completed and reviewed and approved that we're using to keep track of when we do run into a challenge or an opportunity. We're kind of keeping track of those so that we can use that as a learning tool moving forward for the next time we develop the CIP. And so what I wanted to share with you is kind of some of the things that we've learned from that. You know, several projects have been impacted by external factors. An example of an external factor would be, we have a traffic signal that is at a shared intersection with McDot. It's taken us longer to negotiate some of those intergovernmental agreements than we thought, so some of those projects are going slower than we anticipated. Another example would be the remodeling at this facility for Franklin Pierce. They're, they're not ready for what, what they would want done, so we took that project out of the CIP. There's efficiencies, and you've already seen one of those, and that was, we advanced the radio project for the police department, and in advancing that into, fully into this year, we actually saved money as well. So that's technically a change to the CIP, so we're keeping track of those. We've also come upon some priority changes. A good example is that Bullard Wash Tailwater project, where we needed to address it. And that meant we found some money from your special project fund. We also said, there's another CIP project or two that we're not going to do in order to provide funding for that project. Scope changes, there's, you know, where we look at a project, a simple one would be, there's a project to build out some space for the staff to have almost like an office or a lunchroom at the Goodyear Park. That was initially going to be built out on the inside of the current space. When we went to look at that, it really made more sense to add on to the existing buildings. So the scope of that project is changing as a result of that. It's going to be a little bit more expensive than we planned, and so it's actually been delayed, and it's being proposed at that higher cost. And then there's a few items that were added to the CIP for administrative purposes, and that's, if you'll recall, we set the standard for being in the CIP, that it's a project of $100,000 or more. Last year, or in developing this year's budget, was the first time we brought projects funded from the asset management plans into the CIP. And a couple instances, we didn't catch one that was really 100, more than $100,000, so during the year, we've moved those into the CIP. Just to kind of give you an update, this is the title page for the quarterly report that the engineering department prepares. So far this year, we have completed 18 projects. And we have what we call project phases. That would be land acquisition, design, construction. We did establish timelines for each phase, as well as overall projects. And through the third quarter, we had planned to complete 45 phases, and 43 of those were completed within the, that first, that time. And then we had 70 other, we had 68 phases that were supposed to start, and we actually started 70. So we had a couple that didn't quite make their phase deadline, but a couple others that got started ahead of time. So in, moving forward with the capital program, we felt it was important that all in-progress projects be continued, that we not stop a project that we'd already started. We, it was a high priority for the executive team to continue to fund the CIP, that those capital projects, that work brings spending in our community, it's good for our, it's good for our economy. You know, those, those workers who are there, here, working on a project, go spend money in our restaurants when they're open. And, you know, we are also a rapidly growing community, and that growth needs the infrastructure that's in our capital plan. So we, that, the goal of developing the budget was to keep the CIP moving forward and to avoid minimize, minimize delays as much as possible. So the five-year CIP is $590 million. And as is typically the case, when we look at the CIP, it's always very big in the first year and smaller in the out years. This year, it's a little different. I mean, it's unusually large, you know, we have another year or two of an unusually large CIP. Because of this, we have Civic Square. So if you, you know, the bottom part of that blue bar on the first year there is the general fund, which, we have some general funds in the recreation campus and in the Civic Square project. The big bar, kind of big purple bar is the GO bonds also supporting those, those projects. The big, the blue section is the water bonds associated with the big project there. In the out years, there's probably not as much water and wastewater capital projects as we would normally see. We'll talk a couple times about their rate studies going forward, and that's, those five-year plans are how we define what can be funded in the capital program. So, and then in those out years, it's primarily the impact fees that are the orange bars that are consistent, because we do have a 10-year IIP. And so this is then kind of breaking that, the CIP up by those kinds of program areas. Again, the surface water plant is there on the bottom, then your Civic Square is the orange bar, the green bar is the recreation campus, and then the purple bar is your, is the two fire stations that are being completed this coming year, the design for the new fire station beginning, and then the design for the expansion of the police operations facility. So I just want to highlight a few of the project, kind of some of the exciting projects that are in the CIP and let you know how we're going on those. The first one we want to talk about is the recreation campus. Of course, that is something that, there's been a lot of attention to, and we talk about it often. That has the recreation center, the aquatic facility, the community park, and there were street improvements along with that project as well. It's a $67 million project. The carryover right now puts $63 million into next year. Lot of work gonna be going on between now and the summer, when this is scheduled to be fully opened, but that's, we're headed in that direction. And as we get into the supplementals, you'll see this is one of the areas where we do have some of the must-do supplemental recommendations, so that we can open this wonderful campus that we've been working on for so long. The next two projects that we'll highlight are the two fire stations that are in design and either under construction or nearing construction. Fire Station 186 is scheduled to open in the winter of this calendar year, so that project is moving forward. And then the replacement for Fire Station 181 is also in design, and it's running, it's a couple months behind, a few months behind the 186, and, and moving forward as well. And I will note, talk about in the supplementals also, we are exploring, they already have the staffing for these, we are exploring if we need to add some must-do supplementals relative to the operating costs to turn on the utilities and those types of things. So we're working with the fire department on that now. The Civic Square at Australia Falls, that is also, the city hall will be there, a library will be there, and there'll be a park, and that, of course, is our big public-private development project. The entire project is budgeted and funded between this year and in this proposed budget. So if you'll remember, last year, we were counting on year-end savings to help complete the funding, and it is fully funded in the budget that we're recommending. And of course, that one is still a few years away to open in the summer of '22. It's, it's pretty exciting. I know we've gotten to see some of the floor plans and those types of things, so it's fun to see it moving forward. The surface water project, that is one that a lot of people don't really get to see the insides of and those types of things. And again, this is the project to give the city access to our CIP water. The project includes bringing the water from the canal system to the plant that we're building, and it is another project that is on schedule. It's about, still, about a year and a half away, a little bit more than that, until it would be up and running and providing water to the community. But it's on its planned schedule, and it's within its original budget. Land acquisition is happening right now, and there's some construction going on. You can see the dirt's being moved and those types of things as well. So those are the key kind of ongoing projects that are in the budget. Obviously, again, I'm not covering all the projects, just some of the high, some of the highlights of the program. Wanted to also let you know about some projects that are gonna be starting in '21 in the current CIP, continuing to plan the conversion of the street lighting system to LED, reminding you that that will be financed using the utility savings. There's a new project in the capital plan to replace water meters citywide. There's already a project going on now to replace some, a group of those meters, and this will do the rest of those replacements. There's also a number of projects to work on water mains and water lines, just to do system maintenance and repairs where we need to. As I mentioned earlier, both the West Goodyear Fire Station and the Police As I mentioned earlier, both the West Goodyear Fire Station and the Police Ops Project Expansion would begin design in this coming year. And then there's always traffic signals, there's a number of traffic signals in here. And, oh, let's see. Some other projects, there is a project to stabilize the wall at the ballpark. They've completed the project that they had in the current year to do those structural improvements, and so this is kind of the last of what we've identified as a project we'd like to do. We do have a project in to widen Estrella Parkway at I-10 where it narrows down right now. That is, that's a new project included in next year's CIP. And in fact, we already began design of that by identifying savings from another project, so we went ahead and, and began that, that, that design work this year. We've also added a fire pumper, a new fire pumper to be added to the fleet. That is so that we have adequate backup pumper, so if a pumper needs to go in for repairs or maintenance, that's a 24-hour operation, so they have to have a pumper to go out and, and provide service. So we've determined that it's time to add another one to make sure we have that adequate backup. And then there's also a project in here to do the Bullard Tech Corridor, do the landscape improvements along that area. That's both a desire of the city and in some cases, it's a contractual obligation as well, so it's important for us to continue moving forward. And then we also have added a, I guess I, did I say the traffic signal? Did I talk about the, the traffic signal's the one that we funded this year? I don't know if I blend, I combined that with the widening the Estrella Parkway. Sorry about that. Something didn't seem right. But yeah, we're doing that traffic signal, the work on that traffic signal. Other changes to the existing five-year CIP, again, this isn't all of them, but it's kind of the significant ones. The Bullard, there was a Bullard Dark Conduit project that was going to put dark conduit, which is just open conduit that you can put fiber or whatever in later on. There was a project to study that, design that, and construct that over the next couple of years. Because of some of the private activity that's going on, some of that fiber is actually being installed in the city now. So we've reduced the scope of that project to just a study to determine where we still might need to do some of that type of work. So we've removed the project that, to construct and, and design and construct, so we just have a study going forward. The project for Sereville Road from Jefferson to Yuma, that project, we have changed the scope on, it's one of those projects that we've had a scope change. As we began to look at it, we realized that we would create another one of those situations where we have a street that's suddenly narrow. So there's a portion of that, of that street that's a responsibility of a developer, and what we've done is we've gone ahead and we're going to design and plan to construct the developer portion of that project. And then the developer, we would have a cost recovery plan that would allow us to recover the cost of doing that work when the development actually happens. That does result in some delays to moving forward with the project. There are some complex land acquisitions involved in that particular project, and we really can't do design or utility relocations until we actually have those, have the land. So the, the, the project is currently set up to where we are working on land acquisition now. We believe it will take us through the end of next fiscal year to complete those land acquisitions, and then it would be followed by design and utility relocations and then construction of the road. And so we'll continue to monitor that particular project because we know it's of interest to see if there's opportunities, if, if the land acquisition goes better or whatever. Later on, we'll talk about the contingency that's out there, and it may be a project that we come forward and talk to you about again later in the year. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've removed the Franklin Pierce tenant improvements. Water and wastewater, again, it, their CIP, we've taken some projects out mainly because they're sitting down and just relooking at their entire program as part of the rate planning process. So when we come forward with that, you may see some changes in the CIP, either later this year, or later in '21, or in the next five-year CIP. And then we had a project in for a municipal operating center expansion or work down there. We're going to put that off until we actually see that we're going to be adding staff, and we need to make the changes to accommodate staff in those areas. The, if you'll remember, we've had a financial system, financial system project that's been called FISIP, it's been going on for a number of years. And we have completed, we're declaring that project complete, other than there is a piece, the HR performance management piece of that project is in the budget right now, and it's being carried over to next year. But that permitting system was intended to be part of that original project, but it's important to go out and actually re-scope the need in the permitting system and consider all potential vendors. So we're breaking that out, making its own, making it its own project, and it is set up to give them FY '21, to do those scope work, and then it would be funded, or it's recommended for funding in FY '22. We've also deferred a couple of projects. One is the Melinda Baby Pool conversion. We did apply for some CDBG funds for that project and did not receive them. But we're also about to open a new aquatic facility, and I think we would like to see how that aquatic facility opening changes the use of the pool. So that's been pushed back a little bit in the CIP, it's still in there, but pending another look at the real need there. We were going to, I mentioned the maintenance facility already, so that's just been pushed back a year to, over to accommodate the, the increased scope on that space. And then the command van, it, it looks like it's been deferred if you compare this year's CIP to the proposed CIP. That was actually an oversight as we prepared the CIP. It was always intended that FY '21 would be the year they built the scope, and FY '22 was the year it was supposed to be funded. We had it in one place in the asset management fund and in another place in the CIP, so it looks like a change, but it really is what the original schedule was supposed to be. And then just debt services, almost $35 million. Again, that is, includes the ballpark debt that has been refinanced and is pretty much going to be essentially flat throughout the term. It includes the estimate of what debt service will be for the water and wastewater debt that we're issuing right now. And just, and would remind you then, there's a little bit of general fund debt, about $1.4 million. That is, will be paid off in the next three years, so that little slice of the pie should hopefully go away. I'll pause for questions about the CIP or discussion or?
Joe?
On Franklin Pierce.
Just, give me an update on that, why the renovation, was the remodeling was postponed? Are they not expanding? Are they moving somewhere else? What are they doing?
So Franklin Pierce has always maintained they want to expand their programs and move into that additional space. They've had a number of staffing changes and have never just, they've never pulled the trigger on committing to a lease, and we did not want to develop that space until we had a lease that we knew we'd get paid back for that investment. So Franklin Pierce remains committed to Goodyear. They have great things to say about the relationship, including eventually wanting a long-term permanent solution for a campus in Goodyear, but they've just not been able to commit to a timeline to an expansion, either now temporarily or a larger expansion to their own location.
They're still looking for their own built facility?
That would be a future, a future goal down the line, but their interim would be to expand to the space here in Goodyear.
But they just haven't decided when they're going to do that expansion?
They've never committed to, to an actual even plan as to what the layout would look like in that additional space. So instead of carrying it in the CIP, because again, if we want to have a, you know, a fully funded, fully scoped, you know, deliverable CIP, that, we, we just don't have enough specifics to leave it in there. So our commitment would be at which time they're ready, even though it's a five-year CIP, we revisit it every year, at what time they're ready and come back and are actually willing to sign a lease with a plan, then we'll work with them and with the council and, and budget to make that happen for them.
That makes sense, thanks.
Sherry?
I, I just have a question, because I know you really backed off a lot of projects that we were looking for in the future just because of the uncertainty. If stimulus number three comes out or number four comes out, and there's money in there for shovel-ready projects, do we have projects that, you know, because I think at the Great Recession, they did shovel-ready products, do we have projects that we could submit, and would that be acceptable? Is there room in this to do that?
I, I would say, we certainly have projects that are in design, and so, you know, assuming there would be, not be a problem, you know, depending on what they do with supplanting or those kinds of things, but usually when that kind of money becomes available, it's, you can use existing projects to move forward. So we would certainly have the capability to have some projects. It's, you know, you, you just never know what, what they might be, but we are constantly in the process of, we spread out the starts of the different phases, so there's constantly new projects starting to be designed throughout the year. And so I think it's just when that time comes, and if they're federal funds, we don't have a, you know, I talk to you sometimes about the appropriation capacity, we have to have the budget in order to spend. Federal funds are exempt from the expenditure limit, so we could spend them if we received them.
Perfect, thank you.
Julie, do you have any other comment?
Okay, thank you. I think it was Bali first.
Yeah, thank you. Laura, do you know, are the water meter replacements going to be the digital, the new ones that they just drive by and look at?
Can you repeat that in the microphone, please?
Do you know if the water meter replacements are going to be the digital ones? I don't know that they're called digital, but are they, obviously we're replacing them to be more efficient.
My assumption is they are, but I think Javier might be out in the lobby.
I just wondered if they are, and if we are projecting the, the most current ones so that we're not replacing them again in three or four years.
Yeah, it's my assumption we are, but I'd like, I know that Javier is one of the people in the hallway, so.
Thank you. Then you can ask him for me.
I don't know where they... Oh, there's one by Darcy that's not being used.
Mayor and Council, the short answer is yes. The meters that we're installing are going to be fully adaptable to a future remote reading, so yes, they're the latest and greatest.
All right, then are you proposing changing all of them at once? Is this an all do or just part, and so the next year, there'll be an additional?
I don't recall the exact number of meters, but the answer is no, we're not replacing all of them at this time. We're replacing those that we have identified that need replacement. They're old, they're running slow. Actually, the replacement of the meters is going to generate some more revenue.
Okay, thank you.
And that, is that the ones that are funded this year? This is the, this is, we're talking about the money that's in next year's budget?
Correct, we're doing some this year and the bulk of them next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, first I want to say how fortunate we are that we're moving forward on so many of our CIP, such big and substantial projects. And I'm really glad also that we're doing some work at Estrella and I-10, that that's projected. I do want to inquire about that awkward lane heading northbound south of I-10, as we're redoing that whole Estrella intersection and adjacent area. Is that included, or is that a future?
The, the project that's in for next year is to temporarily put a lane in there, so you don't have to, so that will be a quasi-temporary solution. Later in the CIP, there's another project to actually do the work to widen the roadway underneath the underpass, and so at that point in time is when that would become a more permanent change. But it, the intent is, you won't have to pull over just to pull back over again.
Thank you so much.
Bill?
Just a couple of questions that I've got on the, the CIP thing are really related to facilities, which I think is Javier, but, so I figured I'd say that first before I went. But they're more generic, so Laura, you may be able to answer them. We're doing a city facility condition assessment and a fire station condition assessment, and it seems like we're continually doing these facilities, like we're studying the daylights out of our facility stuff, and we're not doing anything. Or to back that up, we spent a couple of million dollars to do facility improvements in our fire stations last year or the year before. What are we, what are we studying, and why are we re-studying these? I mean, we just, it, it seems to be just year after year, we're...
So...
That is page one of 17 in tab...
Probably tab six?
Six.
So I will, I will start. So that's one of the changes that we've made in the current year CIP, is we did have, and it's been an in-and-out effort, to try to figure out what we really need to do with the fire stations that aren't 186 and 188, the existing fire stations. And what we did is we, there was initially some projects budgeted in the CIP in the prior year. They have been studying those and have, we have a study nearly complete or essentially complete, they just weren't able to have it ready in time for the scope to be costed to come into the CIP process. So those studies should be complete. They've also been working on the study for the facilities assessment, so these may be carryover projects if they're in the current year. That project is also nearly complete, and we'll be coming forward with a facilities asset management plan during FY '21. That's one of the strategic goals, is to have that facilities asset management plan done. We've met with them to review the results of that study and have been working through developing that 10-year plan for all facilities. And one of the things that we've been talking about is you have to get those, getting fire and public works together, because fire is responsible for certain parts of their facilities and public works is responsible for others, so we're having them coordinate as well.
Javier is here.
Did Javier come in?
And I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to catch the conversation, because I didn't want to miss anything coming in. So essentially, I think Laura addressed it, the facilities condition assessment is an ongoing project. In fact, we're, we're complete. But there, there were some, there were some things missing in us coordinating the overall condition of some of the fire stations, specific to ones that she mentioned.
Okay, so if I can interrupt for just a second, just to make sure that I've, I've got clarity on that. So the city facility condition assessment for $74,800 looks like a new project for 2021 in the CIP. It's the, on page one, it's the second item.
And it's a carryover, so it's carrying over what hasn't been spanned?
That's a carryover. That's what I'm asking, okay.
Yes, that's a carryover.
So that one I got, so we can check that, check that off. Then, a little farther down, about midway down, is the fire station condition assessment for $163,800. And you're saying that's the new, and that's really for 183, which we just spent over a million dollars in rehab for, so I'm not sure why we're studying, studying it. So that leaves 184, because we've got a brand-new 181. And, oh, I'm sorry, 184, 182.
184, 183, 1, is there an 85? Is there, and the one, and the old 181?
An old 181.
Right. And I think that one is also carryover funding as well. I don't believe that's a new project. So it's carrying over what we're already, so it's not new money.
So it's not a new study?
Continuing the same study that we've started.
And perhaps an improvement for next year, maybe it would be noteworthy for us to include an asterisk on this chart so you can see which ones are carryovers.
I've already had my staff create a new schedule that has a column for carryovers.
Yeah, because I think that would, because it looks like we're re-studying something we've already studied, and that was the genesis of that question.
When you see, there's a thing called Schedule Nine back in Section 7, and it, the next time you see it, I think it's on, it will have a column, a second column on it that shows you the amount of carryovers. Schedule Nine, right now, this shows you which projects are new in '21. It doesn't include any carryovers.
That's great, thank you for answering that. So in... So in the same vein as I thought we did this already, the fire pumper for $850,000, I thought we already purchased one, so we had a spare. Is this another spare from all of the other spares that we, that we have?
It's my understanding that we did need to add two to come to the total that we felt was appropriate, so we did fund one of them in a prior year and this is adding the second one we would need to complete the developed plan.
Okay. And then the next question is this Western Ave property improvements for 120.
That's the carryover of the project that is going on right now.
Okay, so that's not the archway?
No, that's the.
I'll leave that alone for, thank you.
Vice Mayor, that is on page two, a little bit further down. So if you look under Public Art, Western Avenue Archway, that is about two-thirds of the way down.
Oh, yeah.
If that is the project you're referring to.
Yep. But that doesn't come in until '24. Okay. And then finally is the traffic signal Camelback and Saraval, which is page three, about three-quarters of the way down.
I believe that one's also a carryover, but.
It was. We already had a long discussion on that one. Tens forth, that's what's irritating is along this new project, the county's time ring forth.
Well, and that's where I was going with it, so it's a, it's a one-lane in every direction intersection. I'm finding it difficult that we're going to spend all of that money to put a traffic signal in in an area that we know is going to be completely decimated by construction and then rebuilt. But if it's a carryover, then it's a carryover.
It's a carryover project and the, I think they've designed the traffic signal the size that it needs to be and that it is another one that, I believe you're correct. If you'd like further answer, I believe Samit is in there if you'd like.
It's good enough.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that because of the, of the traffic and school age and all of that in the area. I know what you're saying.
This is farther down, the one for the school, that's the one at 152. No, it's east of that.
Oh, east of it?
So that would make it 140-something. I drive by there, I drive through that one all the time, so I know exactly where that is, but that's the one for the school that let the kids cross so they could do, that one I'm totally on board with.
I think they wanted another one.
This is the other one, it's all the way down at the end. Hi, Samit, congratulations.
He's listening. Hi, look at that. And it matches his chart.
I'm going to have to get you in the marketing business.
Thank you.
I can't even tell what it is.
It's the Good Year Monument.
It's a good year, yeah.
The drive, the drive, the concrete monuments that we see in the city.
If you put it right here, they can zoom in on it.
Now you're going to have to walk, you're going to have to walk to the fashion show.
Put it on the Elmo or something.
Thank you. Thanks, Samit.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's one of the signals which we are also working with MegDart on trying to get the cost sharing so that, that has taken some time to develop, but now we have some reason to believe that MegDart will be cooperating with us in the process.
And just to state it publicly for, just because we have it budgeted, doesn't mean we have to do it either. But if we don't budget it, we can't do it, so I just wanted that publicly stated and I'm understanding where we're at, so.
I'm glad you mentioned it.
Thank you for entertaining me, of course.
Thank you.
Stay, I'm not sure, Brandon, do you have?
Question, one for Lori, for, did you say there's a start, a sheet of when these projects are started and what phases they're in now?
The, in terms of the projects that are on here, the, we, we have a, I think that's probably what Samit has in his hand, I don't know if that's the, we have an internal tracking sheet where we know where every project phase was supposed to start, when we started it, when it's completed, so we're tracking that. And then the next time you see the budget, we'll have the individual pages for each project that's included in here and you'll be able to see if it's a carryover project and then you'll see what its planned timeline is as well.
Yeah, just to see if, I mean, if some of these have already started or not started or if they're on track, if they're meeting their timeline or off-track their timeline, but I'll just, just kind of find if any, that, that's a city manager could probably track the project's timelines specifically, but just curious, like a start, like a start button.
The quarterly report that facility, or not facilities, sorry, engineering puts out is designed to help follow along on different phases and such, so, and it's a relatively new report, so if there's things on there that aren't helpful or things that you are missing you'd like to see, please let us know.
Okay, I'm just used to that as a project manager too, but, okay. And then the building, the police building phase two, is that for the entire second story?
That's to begin, the, next year, we're beginning design only, so that's not the whole project, it's a, it's, well, I guess.
That's on page one of 17 here, I'm just looking at, building phase, police building phase two, I just didn't know which phase that was.
So that is adding the second story onto the building.
Okay, but that's only the design?
Yeah, so next year, we'll begin design of that project and then we'll move, then we'll move into construction after that.
Next year, okay.
Any other questions while we have them in?
I had, well, I think it's a different question about the water, about, I know there was a spot, maybe not in the CIP, but there was another section about something we didn't do, about, I think, implementing three of the 12 recommendations from the Water Committee. I didn't know if, I know it's something we didn't do this year, I didn't know if that was something, was there any cost, cost savings or efficiencies or why we pushed that to a different timeline?
Are you talking about the Water Conservation Committee?
Yeah, there was like three of the 12, there was a line item talking about three of the 12, I don't see it again now.
There, there was also some supplemental requests related to some of that, so it's a, you know, not everything's being recommended for funding right now until we get through that five-year rate study and determine how, you know, what, what the, what we can bear.
Yeah, yeah.
And so there's, they'll go through a process of prioritizing and they'll bring that rate study to you and what the recommendations are on.
Yeah, and I'm sure you guys have looked at it, I just didn't know if there's anything in there that would save us money in the long term if we started them now, but I'm sure you guys have done the return on investment and compared it against everything else, so. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? Molly?
Is it appropriate to, probably inappropriate, the archway in '23 over Western Avenue? Why in the world are we doing that? I know the Arts Commission or the Board.
Well, because it is under the Art Commission.
Yeah, they pick it, but do we have to agree to it?
They can send, spend an art, a percentage, what is it, 1%?
It's, yeah, it's 1% of the construction, but don't we have to have some say-so where it goes? Why would we put an archway over the?
Right, you have say-so, the process is, and I think you, there's a, because of the ability to have the Art Commission in the room for these meetings, I think they've postponed bringing that forward to you. But what the Art Commission does is they make a recommendation to you of what projects they believe are, would be beneficial to the community. But ultimately, and the report does clearly state that it's to be considered in the budget process, so it is ultimately the council's responsibility to make a decision of what projects would move forward, so it is a recommendation to the council.
I just don't know that it's appropriate.
Well, we have.
We have a boxing mat.
Can you come up and talk about that?
We've got a boxing club, we have a bingo parlor, and we've got an empty hardware store. Why in the world would we put something over there? And there's no way that's ever going to be our downtown. It's just not going to happen. And we can't even get the land sold or the building sold because we can't separate them yet, so we're at a stage still.
Gailene, a chance to answer your question. Gailene, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I think we're talking about the archway that was proposed by the Arts and Culture Commission over in the historic Goodyear area over Western Avenue. That is proposed for future years in our CIP. And it was an area that the Arts Commission really looks at public art and looks at the Goodyear as a whole, and they look at where our artworks are placed within the city. They identified the southeastern area of Goodyear as a gateway into our city that really could be benefited through public art, that it revitalizes that area. They're looking for the archway to go over by Palm and Tier Park, there's a crosswalk that goes over the roadway. So this just is a proposal from the Commission as a recommendation. Of course, Mayor and Council, your role is to approve the expenditures for that, so we would be looking for you to, you know, make that approval if you see that's appropriate.
Yeah, I just would like to get the Bayless Center developed or, you know, if we knew what was going there, I think that would kind of drive what's going to be.
It could be another 10 years.
Well, it could be 30 years, but.
Let me tell you, that has been ongoing, Wally, ongoing talking to them, ongoing looking at it from economic development, there's never been a pause in it, but you have to have an engager, the other side has to engage, and you're not getting that. So, and they're very in and out of their decision-making and very tight, so, you know, I don't, I don't question your wanting that, absolutely, we'd all want that. We thought they had a buyer for that and, and then that went away. So it's, I think they're at the point that they're looking for another customer for that area.
I talked to a developer last week about that corner and he isn't moving forward yet because he doesn't know what we want to do with it, and I don't know what we want to do with it, so I need to have some more conversations, I guess, with economic development to figure out what they want to do with it. But I just wonder, if we pass this budget, is this archway a go or are we going to talk about it again next year?
I think she said you present it and then we, we make a decision.
Right, and it's in the FY, it's not in the FY '21, so the only budget that you actually appropriate and commit to spending is the first year.
It's '21, okay, that's fine.
You will then, we'll come back to you with the CIP again next year and the year after that to, and you can reconsider.
There just may be something more appropriate than an archway, and I'm so attuned to archways because of having the train station where we can't move it north-south because of the overpasses are too low, and I see an archway and I'm not sure, I don't know, I'd like to see that area have art, but I don't know if an archway is appropriate. So.
Anyway, thank you.
That's all, that's all, as long as we're not voting on it, I'm good.
Joe?
Don't go. Gailene, hold on. So we're going to see this again, the Arts and Culture Commission is coming back before we adopt, I see a bunch of shaking heads, so, and I know the answer to this question, so can we just talk about when that is?
Yes, so in follow-up to a couple of questions I received from council members, Gailene and Winnett told me just a little bit ago that they're looking at June 8th as the date which the, we believe will be open enough as a community and that the Commission will be able to come and present what we shared with council in the yellow paper for your reaction input. And of course, as Lori pointed out, we're only with this budget looking at fiscal year '21, although we do want to plan for a five-year CIP, so the conversation is timely when that art plan comes forward because we do use it to plan future years. But there's a couple of approval points, so not only is it adoption of the art plan, but it's also then as each budget year happens, you'd have another opportunity to leave it in or remove it or revise it.
So the question then in, in that piece is, for us historically, once something enters the CIP, we, we collective rarely take it out. So if we're inserting it, to Wally's point, we have to kind of be mentally prepared that two years down the road, when that next decision point, it's probably already in there and now we've already, we've kind of lit this fuse, so if we say yes today, kind of be prepared for two or three years down the road, it's going to be yes again. I, just for Gailene's benefit, I, I share Wally's concern, but probably from a different perspective. I'm worried about spending half a million dollars on a, on a piece of public art in an area that is very untraveled. I'd rather, if we're going to spend a half a million dollars on some art, I'd rather see it someplace that a lot of people are going to see it at and, and do it, do it in the right ways. I appreciate the vision of the Arts and Culture Commission because that's certainly an area that could use a boost. I just don't know that that's the right, the right boost, and I think we'll talk about that again on the 8th, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
But you will bring it forth in another discussion so that everybody has their opinion on this, and by then, there may be changes as to the property Wally talked about. So we move on and.
Well, Mayor, Vice Nurse Tip, thank you for the comments. We will be coming back on June 8th with this, the fiscal year '21 art plan, which, you know, when you look at the art plan, you're approving just for that year, so as we move through the years and we would get closer to that time, you're talking of the CIP for a future year, if that was in a art plan and that wasn't the right place for that or where we wanted to do budget dollars, then we could have it removed out of the art plan then, because that is the opportunity then to have voice, you know, voice your thoughts of what is best for in the city. So I really appreciate the comments this evening.
All right. So where are we? Are we, are we finished with the questions? Tell me.
No other questions on the CIP?
All righty. I, I think we're done, I'm looking at everybody around the table, no more CIP questions at this time. I'm going to roll on. Any comments to the work they've done on this and how you feel about the budget?
Just a question.
Yes. Joe?
Yeah, I know this year, we, we're going to have a large appropriation contingency. When will there be, will there be a separate discussion of what makes up that large contingency? Because I know at some point, if things turn out a little better as far as the revenue projection go, after July 1, we would be visiting whatever that amount of money is.
Yeah, and we've just finished CIP section, we have a lot more presentation to go and we'll talk about that kind of special contingency later in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? So I'll go on to council, do you have any accommodations, be it for events or for future items?
No, Mayor, we're only, we're just at a break, remember? We paused for conversation.
Kept asking that, are you?
No, that's what I was, I was.
I'm done and nobody, everybody just looked at me. All right, you're on.
No, we're just, we're just ready to move on to the next section of the presentation, I am sorry, but.
She is just getting warmed up, yeah.
Now it's going backwards. Okay. So what we can do is, the next, this is the bulk of the budget conversation that we spend a lot of time on typically, which is talking about the ongoing budget. And so what, as I mentioned, we'll talk about the enterprise funds first and then we'll go through the general fund. So maybe what we could do is get through the enterprise part and then maybe take a break before we get into the general fund at that point in time, does that make sense?
Depends on how they feel.
Yep, okay. All righty, so moving into the enterprise funds, as I've mentioned earlier, and is that we are doing that five-year rate study, and that study is, was funded in this year and it's one of the items that's carrying over in the operating budget to be completed in next fiscal year. Again, we do a five-year rate study and we'll come to you sometime in the first half of next fiscal year to, to share information on that rate study and have you review that and provide input. And then to, you would adopt that five-year plan and that becomes the basis for the rates and the spending for the water, wastewater and solid waste areas. The, just remind, so right now, the budget does not include, it does not assume any rate increase in any of those enterprise funds right now, but I'll remind you that when the surface water project was approved, there was an indication that there would be annual rate increases to support that project. And so, again, that's one of the reasons the CIP isn't as fully flushed out for the rate, for the water wastewater areas, because we don't yet have that, that plan in place. And we present a funded CIP to you, so without those rate increases assumed, we can't bring forward an unfunded CIP. And that rate increase will norm, would normally occur in January. So we'll just walk through each of the enterprise funds. The water fund, kind of basically we have two pie charts here, one's kind of showing you where the money's coming from, and in the case of the water fund, we'll, we'll show you resources are a little bit higher than the budget because we do carry fund balances in those enterprise funds as we're planning for future capital projects or one-time needs. But the water fund has about 51 million. planning for future capital projects or one-time needs. But the water fund has about $51 million in resources and we're planning on spending about $49 million next year. Again, a large part of that expenditure is related to the capital, the surface water project. In terms of their operating budget in the water department or the water fund, we're recommending the addition of $762,000 in supplementals. That includes three positions in that area. And there's also one-time amounts of about half a million dollars. The additions provide for, you know, we have growing maintenance needs in the water and wastewater areas as the system ages. The maintenance needs grow. So both the base budget and the CIP, as well as supplementals, readdress some of those maintenance needs growing. There's also customer service. The utility tech position is to help with customer service in terms of getting meters read and coordinating that type of activity. There's a SCADA update and an expansion. That's both represented in the water fund and the wastewater fund because they split the expenses related to SCADA. This is keeping the software current, updating it and doing, adding some additional functionality to that as well. There's also new well operating costs. Well 26 is under construction and that will come online and it will have some operating costs like electricity. And then there's a project to rehab an arsenic vessel. In the wastewater operating fund, we have about a, just short of $34 million in resources, including their fund balance. And the budget proposes spending 26.5 million of that. And that is an area where there are some future capital needs that we're building fund balances towards a little bit more substantially. They don't have, the water is doing its really big project now. Wastewater might have some larger ones coming in the future. So we're growing that fund balance. In the wastewater fund, in terms of supplementals, we're recommending $808,000 in ongoing supplemental additions. In the wa, in wastewater, we're adding five positions. The utility locator is related to blue staking activity. So that is why we're adding another position there. There are three utility techs. They are helping us to, they're, part of the reason those are being added is to deal with safety. We're gonna minimize the amount of time. We have one individual working at a site. And then in addition, we'll also, as I mentioned, the SCADA information is there. And they have new capital projects. They're doing four lift stations and putting disc filters in at the Rainbow Valley plant. So that's what some of their new capital operating costs are related to. And then there's a project to do some landscaping work at the SAT site to make it more attractive. The solid waste fund has about, we're forecasting about close to 14 million in resources between their fund balance and their revenues. And we're planning on spending 9.3 million of that. Essentially, when you see the pie chart, about half of their budget goes to paying the contract to do the trash collection. So that's the bulk of their budget. And I'll remind you that the, all the, all the enterprise funds now include a contingency, the same 15% of their revenue contingency that the general fund has. And so FY '20 was the first year we included that in the budget and in the financial policies. So we are continuing to include that in there and moving forward. In the solid waste fund, we're only recommending one supplemental, which is related to recycling outreach and education. So that's, anything in particular on the enterprise funds?
Questions? Sherry?
I just have a question overall with recycling. My understanding is that's part of our contract. We don't pay extra for it, so we get it anyway. Do we know what the future, because right now I know both cans are going to the regular, is this something that we're going to keep or what's the thoughts?
That's only temporary due to the pandemic. And it had more to do with staffing and being able to staff at the recycling facility and for the trucks being driven. So I imagine once we return to our new normal, that we have every intent of going back to exactly what we had before the pandemic. It is required in our contract that they do recycle.
Okay. So that won't, that doesn't change the price for our customers flipping or anything at all?
No.
Okay. Because people have asked me because they see both cans being taken, so they were just kind of curious on that.
Yeah, it's a temporary provision just due to the unique circumstances we find ourselves in right now with the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
Do we want to publicize that a little bit more than what has been done?
We have talked about it, Mayor, and attempted to communicate that. But if it's certainly, we can do a new round to make sure everyone understands that it's temporary and what the reason is. Because I think there was also some disruption to the schedules. And so again, we always ask everyone to have their cans out by 6:00 a.m. because now that it's one truck picking up both cans temporarily, they may find themselves in a different schedule from what they've gotten into a routine with. So we can work with communications and do a new round of communication on that. Bulk trash is absolutely still going and I can speak from my neighborhood only. I think during this time of being at home, a lot of people have been purging and there seems to be more than we've seen before. So I'm glad we were able to keep that service going.
Brandon, did you have a question?
I had a question.
I had a question about the head count. Maybe that's a Javier question. But how many Blue Steak people do we, or surveyors do we have currently?
If Javier knows the answer to that, we'll ask him to.
I was just curious.
We'll phone a friend if he's out there and knows the answer to that. Otherwise, we'll get back to you with, next week with that information.
Okay.
I don't remember. I know we've added in the last couple of budget years. I just don't remember the total.
I know we're growing. I just was, I'm just curious how many surveyors we have or need or.
Oh, he's here.
Here's your lifeline.
And then.
I'm gonna run out of them.
I'm sorry, I was in the middle of a conversation. What was the question?
How many surveyors or, do we have already? Utility locators?
Blue Steak, we actually just have one.
Okay, this will be the second one. Okay, okay. That makes sense then. And we want to, you want to hire two more INC techs? Two?
Correct. Yes, the SCADA system expands.
Yeah.
We need him not only to really expand you, but as well, the system becomes more complex and needs maintenance.
That makes sense. Okay. I was just, I was just curious about head count.
Thank you, Javier.
Thank you.
Wally's got a question.
Oh, Javier, I just would like to tell you that our neighborhood really likes the way the trash pickup is. Now, when the one truck comes, he takes both and he's early in the morning and we love it. But I have people out waiting. And then yesterday, there was a truck following them and for $25, they'd wash out my trash cans. But it wasn't from Rad.
Who's it does that?
It's a company that's going around to clean your, but it's not, it's not, has anything to do with our trash. It has nothing to do with the city.
How'd they get in?
But somebody's being very enterprising and they'll wash your trash cans out for 25 bucks.
That's an interesting bit of information. Thank you.
But thank you very much. I just wanted you to know that the service is great and we really appreciate it.
No, there's a non-.
I appreciate your comments. Yeah, the transition, you know, like any transition to the new vendor has his hiccups, but they're doing a great job.
Doing a great job consolidating and.
Joe?
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere.
My question was, we have a new, you know, trash pickup company now. And I've had great service with them. But I guess my question is, what's your feedback been with the, for many customers out there that are using this new service?
Again, you know, past the initial hiccups, we've had, in fact, there's been some features of some citizens making some great comments about the service. No, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with, with the service they're bringing to me. I just, overall, was wondering what you're, what you're getting at there in the community. So.
Yeah. And in fact, during the last few weeks, we were just commenting that we, we're getting very few calls from citizens. It's, everything's going very smoothly.
Okay, thank you.
What were the, what were the four that you requested that were not giving you? Out of the pub, out of the public works here. Maybe that's in general fund. That's, nevermind, that's just the next, that's the next topic. Sorry.
I was gonna say, most of their, the enterprise funds are very good at making their supplemental requests be what they need. And we don't usually have a lot of things in there that don't get funded. I think there was only one item, which was the water conservation item that wasn't recommended.
Yeah. I was looking at the head count. They requested four for general fund, but they didn't get any. So I was just curious what that was.
Thank you for our lifeline. Yeah, they are.
I'll keep my.
Yes, thank you very much. He didn't know he was gonna be so popular, Mayor.
So if there's no other questions on the enterprise fund, we can get started on the general fund if that's where we want to go. All right?
We're gonna get nods from you. What do you want, gang?
All right.
Okay, proceed.
All righty. So general fund, where the budget is about 200 and, or the resources are about 200.
Hang on. Can we just take like a five-minute break? Just to get up and move around? Because we've been sitting here for an hour and a half.
Yeah. You, I guess you didn't get the question when you first asked it there. You're a little slow.
Well, I was, I was wait, I didn't want to be the first one to whine about needing a break.
Let's take 10.
But I'm the only one.
Let's take 10 minutes, okay?
You can whine, Bill. It's okay.
Well, he's getting older, you know, a little stoned.
Resources are $206 million, almost $207 million. Whoa. There it comes. And of that, about almost 40% is coming from fund balance. Again, that's, the fund balance is a little bit higher this year. Capital projects, recreation campus and the civic square both have a substantial amount of general funds in them. And so they're contributing to that as well as the norm, other normal carryovers and our savings that were coming from last fiscal year. And we still have our revenue are still budgeted to be higher this year than, than, our revenue's estimated to be higher primarily because of construction, sales tax and development-related revenues. So that's contributing to this year's, our FY '21's one-time resources.
You go to the next size. Does anybody have a charger that you can plug in? Sorry to do that to you.
No problem.
Sherry does.
Hello?
Sherry's got everything. Oh, there you go. After all this good work, it's just turning it off. So. Oh, I thought she had a, yeah.
You have a little battery with it?
And just if it goes off.
Look at you, Sherry.
It should be charging?
Yeah.
If it goes, just push this button again, okay? If it turns itself off.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Wow. That's pretty good. That's way better than this budget stuff. And, and I, sometimes people are confused. So earlier I said that low, non-construction sales tax are about 50%. That was of our revenue. Of our total resources, they're about a quarter because of, mainly because of that fund balance. Okay, now we're gonna play this game again. All right. So how the general fund is expended, about 46% pays for day-to-day operations. And again, the other, that's kind of the darker blue part of the pie. And then there's another 55 million associated with the CIP, again, larger than typical. And we'll kind of go through and talk about each of those pieces. But we'll spend a little bit more time on revenue than we normally do because that is where we're dealing with the uncertainties and the unknowns of the current environment. And so as you, you know, the stay-at-home order has unknown effects to our sales tax revenues and the behaviors going on, going forward. Still don't have a lot of consistency in some of the economic information that's out there. You know, that I read something today where they were predicting something like it's a 50%, or one person was saying it was gonna be 50% and the other person was saying it's gonna be 20% or, you know. And so there's big gaps in kind of the forecast of what might be happening as well. Obviously, we don't know about stimulus, if there'll be a future opportunities for us to tap into any resources there. And the, there is the three-phase plan to open up America that is still unknown as to how that is gonna roll out here in Arizona and in our city. And then we've talked a little bit already about the nature of when we can get the information on our local sales tax. So we'll, we'll be waiting anxiously to get that data. But I'll just remind you that we won't really have the June, we won't have April's information in time to incorporate into adopting this budget because we have to get the budget adopted before, by, by early July. So first just kind of property tax. We are, is, right now is probably the most stable revenue we have. We've got our assessed valuations. And the property tax is being recommended within policy, which is we are maximizing the primary property tax. In doing that, we will pick up about $630,000 from the new construction that was added to our rolls, which was nearly, was just in excess of $62 million in assessed valuation. And then we get another $450,000 coming from appreciation on existing properties, which was at about 4.9%, just shy of the 5% maximum that individual properties are permitted to be reassessed at. And then we get another just over $200,000 increase associated with that maximizing that 2%. And then the secondary property tax, the combined property tax rate is within the $1.74 or less policy that the council has adopted to help guide us when we can issue new GO bonds. And the budget does anticipate that late in the fiscal year, we would be issuing new GO bonds. And that's provided for in the secondary. GO bonds, and that's provided for in the secondary.
Joe? Is a question.
I got a question on that. I know our rate stays $1.74. Is there a way, because I know there's a maximum that the assessed valuation can grow, which is 5%, which means that if, on average, everything was at the 5%, we're going to have a 5% increase in our property tax. The question I have, do we have an average because some may have actually gone down as opposed to hitting the maximum 5%? I know mine personally is well above the 5%, so I'm still working on borrowed time every time the new assessed valuation comes in. You know, they got plenty of room to raise to 5. I'd just be curious on that because, you know, with our policy of keeping a rate stable, we're going to have an increase regardless unless our assessed valuations on the people that have been in place actually have gone down, which I doubt has happened. I'm just curious on average, did we hit the 5% for 95% of all of our properties that were in existence ahead? That kind of gives me an idea of what the average increase in our property tax to our residents is going to be overall.
And the, we don't have that data, we haven't analyzed the data at that level in terms of how individual properties were treated. We just know that the total assessed valuation increased by 4.9%. That increase does drive down the primary rate because we, we can only levy what we levied this year plus the 2% and the, you know, the new construction. So that, you know, we can do some more explanation, exploration.
Yeah, I'd just be curious on that because if I were to ask the question, you know, you know, I'm not a proponent of blocking a rate anyway because it's a mathematical calculation. The real result is what we are assessing, what our levy's going to be. So, if I can get a general idea like that, if I'm asked a question, I can answer it honestly, say, here's probably what your taxes are going to go up. Is it 2%, 3%, you know? Alls I know is mine's probably going to be 5 because I'm over, well over my assessed valuation. So as they hit that maximum of 5% each year, I'm usually getting the 5% each year, so.
Right, and we'll, for the, either for tentative, or for tentative, we'll go ahead and include a calculation on what the average homeowner can expect, even if we just use the 4.9% and show you this is what your property taxes for Goodyear would be, what they are this year and what they would be next year.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll do that for tentative.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Wally?
Laura, would, following up with Joe's question, would the 4.9% be in addition to what the county assessor raises our taxes? Because he's the one that actually comes out with it.
So, the assessed valuation that we're talking about is the amount that the county assessor establishes. So, they establish the assessed valuation.
Yeah.
And so, that is, that 4.9% that we're talking about is for all of the properties that exist in Goodyear that were assessed, that existed on the property tax rolls this year. Their assessed valuation is growing 4.9% in total. So, some projects might have gone up 1%, some, and there is an ability to go higher than 5% in certain circumstances. So, some may have gone up more than 5%, some may have only gone up 1%.
So, if it goes up more than that, does that mean it changes our tax rate from, to 1.74 more?
Our tax rate, so the property tax, you get the assessed valuations in February, and you use those to set next year's levies. Those assessed valuations are not going to change. So, once we establish what we want our levy to be, there might be just minuscule change because there's some central properties that might change, or there might be a lagging protest, but it would not in any way materially change the numbers.
Oh, good.
So, these, this is known for us. So, for, this is the tax rate that we would be levying, or the levy that we will do next year and what tax rates that equates to for our, for our residents and businesses.
Good, thank you.
All righty. Local, non-construction sales taxes. So, we'll go through a couple of charts as well, but just to give you an idea of what we've done with the revenue estimates. Again, this was done early in the knowledge of what was happening. So, what we did is we went through and we made the deepest losses from, we, we measured, kind of forecasted revenue based on last year same month. And so, for hotel, motel, amusements, entertainment, like the movie theaters or something like that, that's where we forecasted the deepest drop in our revenues. After that, it was restaurant and bar because those, they, they have been impacted. We did assume some decline in retail. That is somewhat moderated by the fact that we have, starting in October, we now collect revenue on internet transact, based transactions, and we are tracking that information. It's, it's been about 130,000 a month we've been collecting in sales tax from internet-based transactions. So, we'll see how that looks in, in March and April as well. Food for home consumption, we did assume would go up in March, you know, because of kind of the stocking up, when folks realized that they were going to need to be prepared and grocery store shelves started clearing off and those types of things. And food for home consumption's been performing well above prior year all year long. It's been about 10% on average above prior year. So, we maintained that throughout the forecast, that it's, will be 10% higher. More than likely, it'll be higher than that in, in some cases. We do have high, you know, we're conservative in our approach to forecasting revenues, and that's serving us very well in this moment in time. We did have, we have had very high collections in the first eight months of the year, and that has, those collections, despite some of the changes we've made in our forecasts, right now, we're forecasting that we'll still collect more than we budgeted for local non-construction sales taxes. Not a lot more, but still more than we had originally budgeted. So, these charts are a little confusing, a little, but we're just kind of showing you the trend here. So, this is food for home consumption. And what we're showing you is month by month, information on the amounts that we've collected or what we're forecasting. And so, the first bar in the series is the 2018 actuals. The next bar in the series, the kind of blue with the slanted line, is the 2019 actuals. The kind of orangey-redy color with the horizontal lines is 2000, it's this year. If, the ones that show lines are actuals, and then the one that is solid is what we're estimating. And then, the black bars are what we're estimating for next year. So, as I mentioned, food for home consumption, if you look in the early part of the year, you can see each, each, you know, in July, each July is higher than the July before. And we've had pretty consistent growth like that. So, when you look at the orange bar and the black bar in the last several months, the last few months of the year, you'll see we're forecasting above what we collected in the prior year. And March is, so March is about 25% higher than what we collected last year. And then, the rest of the year, it's about 10% higher. So, retail is probably the area that, probably has the most uncertainty in terms of us trying to forecast what's going on there because we have, some of these behaviors are stocking up and that, you know, when you're at the grocery store and you buy paper towels, that's subject to the retail tax, not the food for home consumption tax. So, there's some activity going on that might be causing retail to go up. But then, when stores have been closed and their non-essential businesses have been closed, more than likely, we're going to see a decline in retail. So, it, and, and it is the largest part of our non-construction sales tax.
So, do you think the internet will make any changes to that?
The internet, the internet is helping. And the people that do shift to internet, we would say, the law says they need to report that sales tax to us. You know, but if you're a little, you know, if you're your own little business and you're selling doodads, you might not know all the sophistication of sales tax laws. So, we might not get all of that activity that might shift to the internet back. But at least we're in a position where folks, if you're going, if you were going to walk in Target's front door and buy something and instead you chose to buy it online, it's highly likely Target is going to pay us that sales tax. So, it's, it's, you know, not going to be a perfect dollar-for-dollar, we'll get it all back, but the internet is certainly going to help us through this. And that's why we have assumed that for March, we'll collect 90% of what we collected last year. So, we didn't drop it as severely. Again, it's, because it's the biggest revenue category, we don't want to take risks on it, but there should be, it was only a partial month, so that seemed reasonable. For April, we're assuming we'll only collect 80% of what we collected in the prior year. And then, for the last two months of the year, we assumed 85%. Restaurant and bar, we assume that for March, we'll get about 60% of what we collected last year because, again, remember, it's a partial month. Then, we assume 50% in April. So, all of our assumptions, when they were done, assumed that April was the bottom and that things would start to turn around in May. So, you know, here in Arizona, they're starting to open things up in May, but they're not, it's not a clean cut, so we'll see how that changes. But then, we assume we'd collect 60% of last year's actuals in May and 75% in June. So, hotel motel, you'll see when you look here, February, we're actually showing the act, or we're showing actuals in February, which are substantially lower than last year's actuals. We did not anticipate that. However, we believe there are some taxpayers who did not report, and we're following up on that. So, more than likely, February is not as low as it looks, and it's a matter of getting folks to file some tax returns. Then, we did assume in March, we'd, we would drop to 50% of what had been collected in the past. Again, spring training was canceled halfway through, about halfway through the month, so that's why we made that decision. And then, in April, we assumed there'd only be 25% of what we collected in the prior years and moving up to 50% after that.
Oh, Joe?
I'd be curious when you match up your restaurants, and the only reason why I say that, I've talked to a couple of owners because some of them are doing the carryout and some are just flat closed. And the ones that were doing the carryout said they were running about 25, 30% of their business. So, I'd be curious to see if that 50% holds true only because, and again, it's not our largest category, only because I think it might be a little high, but we'll find out when those numbers come in. Because at least, that's what I've been told, it's about 20, and that's the ones that are actually converting over to carryout versus, you know, the other. So, I think the restaurants are going to be our, our bigger hit when, when all is said and done.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And like I say, you know, every day, there's new information, and it would be great if we could every day change our revenue estimates. And I'm sure the executive team got tired of me saying, you know, we did these before this and before that and before that. So, but I, I, I believe in the end, I agree with you, that we're probably high in restaurant. And I, I'm guessing, I'm hoping we're a little bit low in retail, and that will help make up for some of those areas because it is the, the big chunk of the, of the, of the pie.
Jerry?
Yeah, and to piggyback on that comment, I think what you just said about retail, a lot of the clothing and smaller shops were shut, but Best Buy was doing curbside pickup. Your big boxes were still open and had lines. I know apparently, everybody who's dumping the garbage out is at Home Depot and Lowe's, you know, getting supplies to redo their house. There seems to be a lot of that, so I think that'll be interesting to, to break down. When we break that down, does it, does it just come as one number or does it break down to what the big boxes, I mean, how does that break down for us? Just to get an, statistically, an idea of what happened.
Yeah, we, we have, we, you may remember, a year or two ago, we came to you with a supplemental request that we could invest in a service that the City of Phoenix was offering, where they have a database, where they're taking the data from the state and they're making it easier for us to use. So, we do have the ability, and I'm sure if you talked to the revenue analyst on our team, he would tell you, he had about five emails from me today saying, did we get anything that's worthwhile to look at today? So, we are combing through that data and looking at those kinds of things, you know, what, you know, you know, where, how are, how does, you know, the lot, the top 10 taxpayers compare to where, what they paid us last year for the same month? So, we can start getting a better sense of, of what's going on. So, we will, we will be able to do that. It's a little bit more tedious to go in taxpayer by taxpayer, so, but we, we're, that's our intent. It's just that in March, we, we still won't have that data until middle of June. And so, that's, that's our biggest challenge is we're all chomping at the bit to find a way to start digging into this. And we'll, we, we just, we just keep asking questions and we keep, we'll keep looking at it, so. All righty. And then, in terms of sales tax, non-construction sales tax for next year, we do a slow assume us, you know, that this is a big drop that bottoms out in April and then starts climbing out, and we just do a slow climbing out. You know, if you look at hotel motel on this chart, it, the black bar is much higher than this year's bar. But that's because we're assuming we're returning too close to normal or where we were before by next year. So, we, we kind of are building ourselves back to a, a place that hopefully we can get to. All right.
Excuse me, Joe has a question.
No, I just, another stat would be interesting whenever you start doing your analysis because some of the information, Julie, you have provided as far as unemployment for Goodyear, actually, I thought was pretty good news, is to see what percentage of your residential rentals get hit. In other words, those that weren't able to pay their, their monthly, you know, rent. Because that just kind of filters down to the one holding the paper, who actually owns the building, to the ones that they've got to pay too. So, those were, I thought, pretty decent numbers on the, for how we were hit on the unemployment. But it would be interesting to see how that drop is, and that kind of gives you an indication with the layoffs of those that maybe aren't able to, to make their payments or their rent payments.
All righty. Okay, so we'll move on. So, sale, that's, sales tax, ongoing sales tax is kind of the big, the big, big boy in this discussion. Development-related activity, when we did these estimates, we did not assume any decline in kind of our normal practice relative to budgeting for development-related revenues. That's the user fees coming out of development services and engineering. We are, which that includes, one change we did make is, we have considered as ongoing revenue, the development-related revenues that are basically recovering our ongoing costs, so the cost of the full-time staff and those types of things. When we built this year's budget, when we added those one-time temporary help that we've been doing quite a bit of in recent years because of the activities that we have, this year, we went ahead and assumed 100% of those would be recovered in revenue. We went ahead and took a little bit extra conservative step here, and we're only assuming 50% of that would be returned in revenue. Not that we don't, you know, not that we don't think it'll come in in revenue, but we're building in some places where we have some room to absorb future changes. And then, and then just by way of information, through, you know, this, through April, we've issued 1,203 single-family permits. As of last, last year, we had issued 1,208, 1,230. So, we're still very much on par with being above what we issued last year in permits. But I will say that the permits were a little bit lower this month. They were lower la, in March, but that was part of that run-up to the impact fee that we spent, spent last year. So, we'll continue to monitor what's going on there, and we're starting to get some economic reports that, that home builders may be starting to have confidence weaken. You can't really go, it's hard to kind of go look at a model home right now. And so, that might have an impact on them in the, in the short term. And then, construction sales tax, at eight months, we're two times what we collected last year. We haven't changed our original estimates from those we did in early March. But again, we're still conservative. We're forecasting the, here, you can see what we've included in the forecast. We basically just forecasted that we'll collect what we collected in the last half of last year, this year. So, there, so we would anticipate... So, we would anticipate that we will have higher revenues in construction sales tax when we finish out the year. Another area impacted by the pandemic response are our state shared revenues. Normally, we use revenue estimates provided by the league and the and the Department of Revenue. We did get their estimates before the pandemic. They have not provided us their estimates for their revenue streams post-pandemic. So, we have applied similar assumptions that we use for our sales taxes to their sales taxes to adjust our revenue estimates. Just as a reminder, on the chart, the blue bar on the bottom is the income tax or what's called urban revenue sharing. That is known. It's two years, it's shared two years in arrears. What we haven't done here is allocated and increased relative to our population change. Our every year, the formula is adjusted for what your population is relative to all the other cities in the pool. And we generally grow faster than everybody else. So, generally, we have a population factor increase. So, we have not built that in. So, we'll have some capacity to absorb any other revenue losses when those population numbers come in. Again, they don't end up coming in until May or June. So, they aren't available when we go through the budget process. We initially thought we'd go ahead and try to do a population factor ourself, but opted not to when the the economic climate changed. So, the impact here is also vehicle license tax. We did assume a slight decline about 5% from last year. Probably not going to be a lot of people buying new cars in the near future. But and hopefully, they'll get caught up in paying their vehicle license taxes on their existing cars. If you'll remember, when we came to you early in the calendar year with the five-year forecast, we had good news about the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. We weren't anticipating that we would receive any revenue from them until next year when we were preparing last year's budget. But they came forward and told us we were going to receive some resource, some money this year. And they gave us our estimate for this year and for next year. They have, they have given us new estimates and they did a, they shared also their assumptions. We reviewed their assumptions. They appear to be conservative and they have historically been conservative in their revenue estimates, which is why we're planning on their selling, saying we're still going to get over $1 million this year when they thought we would have nothing in the estimates we got last year. So, but we did have to slightly reduce the current year estimate by just short of $100,000. And the more painful piece is that next year, they reduced their estimate of what we would receive by 1.4 million dollars. So, that is a, we've incorporated their estimate. We recommend sticking with their estimate. We feel confident it's conservative and that will be will be coming forward. Those resources will be made available. Other, we have some other funds that impact the general fund. That is the Ballpark Fund and the HERF Fund. Both of those funds, the difference between their revenues and their expenditures, the gap is provided is funded by the general fund. So, when we lost the, when spring training was canceled, we missed, we lost that $900,000 in spring training revenue. That meant the general fund was going to have to support that difference. There is a, there are some savings on the expenditure side that we haven't quite fully worked all the way through. So, there'll be some of that will be offset by savings, but not to the extent of the whole revenue loss. We did assume for next year that spring training will resume as it has been in the past in terms of preparing our revenue estimates. And HERF, as I mentioned earlier, it is driven based on you going to the pump and buying gasoline. It's not based on the value. It's an amount, it's just a fixed dollar. It's a fixed number of cents per gallon. So, if the price of gasoline drops, it doesn't cause a change in HERF revenue. It's just buying fewer gallons, changing changes our HERF revenue. And so, again, we did those estimates. We heard some early reports and, you know, that driving had dropped by 35% and those types of things. So, that was kind of the data that we used to make these revenue adjustments. So, in terms of how those resources get spent, the general fund, we're going to spend about $180 million. And of that, about 40% pays for day-to-day or pays for salaries and benefits. Another about 10% pays for contractual, things like utilities and postage and those types of things. Another 3% pays for supplies. And then, of course, a big commitment to the CIP again this year. Oops, that one went the wrong way. So, go through the pieces of the puzzle. So, the operating budget is 96.1 million of that $180 million. The base budget is something that departments submit their requests. The Budget Office works with them and reviews them. It maintains existing programs and services. If we do apply, we assume full employment in our base budget estimates. So, that means we assume every position is filled throughout the year. That's one of the places we generate savings each year that become one-time resources for future years. And then we've incorporated any known contractual or projected inflationary increases as well. We have salary and benefit changes. I'll talk about those a little bit more in another slide. And then the other thing in the operating budget is the must-do ongoing supplementals. There's about $1.7 million in must-do supplementals and that equates to 18.4 positions. And we'll look at that a little bit more closely, too. So, in terms of compensation and benefits, the base budget as presented includes the tentative negotiated agreements with Representative Police and Fire. We were, we began the negotiation process in the winter and we're essentially complete in March. And what is included in those agreements is a 5% step if the individuals are not topped out already and a 2.5% market. And then there are other adjustments such as to specialty pays or assignment pays and deferred compensation. The non-represented were what we're recommending when, you know, we talked about when we started the budget, the early March budget. We did have a different recommendation for the non-represented salaries. What we are now recommending is that in July, we make a 2.5% of your of your salary payment to each non-represented employee. And that our intent would be that we would come back to council mid-fiscal year to talk about, once the revenues are more clear as to how they're performing, that we would come back to council to discuss if there's a means to further adjust the non-represented salaries to move them closer to, I I think, the level of parity that the organization, the council and the organization desires. As we go through the rest of this con, this presentation, we'll talk about that we're creating a special contingency. If the revenue estimates all hold, that would be a place you could go to look for a way to address additional pay or benefits. And then if revenues perform higher, that would be another place.
Bill?
Do you want to stop and talk about it now or do you want to do it later?
Totally up to you. Your, your, your preferences.
Does it come back later?
No, it does not come back later. So, it would be a good time to talk about it now.
Okay, that's where I was driving with that. So, I I had a conversation with manager this afternoon. So, this is not, this isn't shot from the left field. I cannot remember if we talked about this during our small group or if it was the whole group. It was a small group, okay. In our small group discussion, we talked, and I think it was Wally and Sherry and I, talked a lot about this one-time versus an ongoing payment. And trying to we're always trying to do the best thing that we can for the employees. And we've got, we've got this, despite our best efforts, we have the two, we have two groups of employees. We have represented and non-represented. And our goal has always been to treat them both the same, to be equal in both of that. And because the contracts were negotiated pre-pandemic and came to an agreement pre-pandemic, we're kind of stuck in 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 agreeing to those, those stipulations here as we that are on the slide. So, now what do we do with the with the with the non-represented employees? The discussion that we had in our small group was one-time versus an ongoing payment. One-time would be kind of akin to a stimulus check where they get one lump sum, taxes taken out, et cetera. And off they go where the 2.5% market adjustment keeps it in, you know, ongoing forever, but it also keeps us in the market. What I suggested that night and what I wanted to say tonight was the money is exactly the same whether we do a one-time or lump sum. And I'm going to look to say.
It's the, the cost is the same whether we pay people a 2.5% salary increase in part of their hourly wage or if we give them one check upfront. The costs are essentially the same.
So, the costs are the same. So, what we're really talking about now is the difference between ongoing and the market or or the one-time, no market adjustment. And I just want to refresh everyone's memory of a number of years ago when we played a lot of catch-up to get caught up to the market and we were constantly behind and it was big raises as we were, as we were coming out of the last financial crash. I personally do not want to see us go through that again to have to continually try to catch up to the market. The concern about the ongoing versus one-time revenues, we all, I think, understand the difference between that and what the issue is. However, think about this message. We're looking at all these slides. We're talking about an increase of 25 or 26 employees.
Yeah.
Roughly. 18 of them are. Yeah, 18 of them are general fund and the rest are are enterprise. So, we're talking about increasing the employee count. We're talking about maintaining the 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 same number of positions that that we had. And then we're adding these other ones where we've been so financially conservative, which is the, which is obviously proving to be the right, the right path. So, all these things are very, very good. But yet, we're going to tell our employees who are not represented, sorry, you don't get an annual increase. You get a one-time payment. And then maybe later in the year, the only thing we're really going to be able to talk about later in the year are the other benefits, not related to salary. So, deferred comp and some of the other things that are in the negotiated agreements. Because we can't do a one-time lump sum and then go back and say, okay, well, now we're going to start doing a 2.5% market adjustment because that would essentially be a 5% raise this year and we don't want to do that. So, I would just kind of implore everyone to think about, and if the money is neutral, to think about doing this from a market adjustment perspective. And my guess would be we're probably looking at 50% of the employees want a one-time check and 50% want it for the long term. I think that's just based on human nature. That will be where where we're at. But I, I, I think we're making a mistake if we don't continue with our market adjustments, that we will fall behind. And next year, in April or May, we'll be having a discussion about a 5% or 6% increase to get caught back up to the market. And I don't want to see us fall behind. We've done such a good job of getting forward. I, I hate for us to slide backward. And I really want to send the message to the city employees that that even though we're not able to do exactly the same thing we did with the represented folks, that we at least care, I don't want to say care, that we at least want to push forward a market adjustment that goes on in into the future and not just the one-time thing. So, I throw that to the rest of my council compadres.
And Council Vice Mayor Stipp, if I may add one thing, you could address salaries mid-year as well. It's not that you couldn't. And we do have initially talked about the concept of a market and a merit, which would be merit would be similar to a step increase. So, staff can certainly work with you in a creative way if you do want to address salaries mid-year. So, I, I don't want to leave that without saying we, we can find a way to do it if it's a desire of the council. And I'm not, I'm not trying to disagree or anything with you.
No, and I think that's a good point. And what we had talked about was if we're going to do this one-time, if we do this one-time and then we come back later and we try to attach it to a merit component, it still doesn't help us in our market position. Right? So, I'm talking strictly about market where is where my comments were. But I appreciate the the clarification because you're absolutely correct.
Wally?
So, Lori, if we do the 2.5 market adjustment, is it going to bring them up to market? Because we don't know what market is in the positions. And with police and fire, we could see it because we had the salary ranges and we saw how that worked.
Right. To the best of my knowledge, we've not done a market study for the non-represented employee group. So, it is our best estimate of what a market would be. If you want additional conversation on the topic, we can ask Lyman to join us. But that's it, that's my understanding of the situation.
We don't do them. We don't do salary, we don't do market adj, we don't, market studies every year.
We don't do market studies every year. We do occasion, we do like pick some representative positions every year.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And the question I'm addressing is the market rate for our non-sworn. So, we have not done a market study for the non-sworn. What we would assume, though, is that the market is moving at the same level for all groups. So, we see that with fire, we see it with PD. We would assume that the market is moving also for our non-sworn at that same 2.5% pace.
What does that mean? We're paying our, our, the non-sworn as much as other cities are paying their non-sworn?
Correct, yes. However, we don't have a market study to back that up.
Okay.
A market study for our non-sworn, it's a little bit more detailed than it is for fire and PD since we have a large body of individuals in one singular position or three or we'd have to do each individual position for our non-sworn staff. So, it's a little bit more detailed. Last time we did a full market study, we actually hired Waters to do so. So, it was a full compensation study.
Laura?
How long ago was that full compensation study?
Beg your pardon?
How long ago was that full compensation study?
That was in 2017.
Okay, so it's fairly recent. How did, how did we look overall?
We made adjustments. We, and I'm going from memory here, but we did apply a market adjustment at that time. And the market, just based on some anecdotal information that we get because from time to time, we'll survey individual positions as we see things moving. So, we do see movement.
Okay. I, I know that sometimes cities have other marker cities that we follow, you know, that are similar and have similarities. So, within the non-represented groups, if they have steps left within the pay range, would they continue on through those steps regard, I mean, as part of their regular?
Non-represented, so a non-represented are on a, what we call a broad range as opposed to steps. So, they'll move based on the increment that we apply as opposed to fire and PD that move in 5% increments.
Okay, so they don't move unless everybody moves?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sherry?
When we had our small group, it was really, it was really interesting. It was a good discussion. It's the representative, it's like a total package is like 4.9% around there?
Correct, yes. For our represented, yeah, 4.7 or 4.8 depending upon.
Okay. So, it's just shy of 5% when you add all the benefits? Yeah, this was a really hard one for me because I see both sides. There's a lot of families where one spouse may have lost a job or was in a business and has no business. And I, I think the the upfront payment is a good. And I, I think that the upfront payment is a good thing to help a lot of people who need the money now. Whereas you do a 2.5, you get just an incremental few dollars in your paycheck, not really enough to help pay the mortgage that you need paid, you know, in June and July and August. But then you don't want to basically put us in the spot or put our employees in a spot where they can't, you know, that they're behind the ball for the next, you know, several cycles that, you know, that we either have to like what Bill said, either have huge rates to get people caught up to keep employees, or they're just always lagging behind, which we don't want that either. So this was a really tough one. I know we talked about maybe some sort of hybrid. And if that's a possibility, like, you know, a 2% and then does that money equal out if you don't start the 2.5 until January? I, I don't know the math on that. And, you know, I know you said there was like 10 million ways to run it. Or if we don't do the deferred comp this year or something else, is there a way we could equal that out?
Thank you, council members. So we did, we spent some time going through the multitude of options and, you know, truly felt that the best two options were still a two and a half percent one time or a two and a half percent ongoing. Really where the conversation started, once the pandemic hit and we started seeing, you know, different potential conversations about what the impact would be to our revenues, is the, the desire and what we're seeing a lot of our sister cities do is they're pausing, waiting till they have data and then making the decision. So one of our early conversations was is perhaps there is no nonrepresented pay increase now and we come back mid-year and then look at what that full package would be when we had information. But as we talked around the table, we really felt that didn't meet council's interest or our, our organization's interest for parity. We didn't think it was going to be as equitable to move forward with just the represented packages and then hold off on the non rep. And so that's really where we ended up with, well, maybe a conservative approach would be to do a one time payment while we hold our breath and then come back mid fiscal year, knowing that we had some contingency set aside, that we'd be able, you know, at that point, able to revisit it. So truly, we did take to heart the conversation about is there a way to kind of, you know, split the difference? But we really ended up saying that if you wanted to make a substantial one time payment, anything less than two and a half probably isn't going to feel very substantial. Really would prefer not to wait to do anything until mid-year. But of course, to Vice Mayor's comment, the impact to the current fiscal year, whether it's a two and a half one time or a two and a half ongoing, is the same. It's really our faith and our projection as to what future budget years are going to look like. And we believe that's, we will recover. So, you know, it, it is a very tough conversation from a staff perspective on our recommendation. We went to the more conservative of the two approaches, but know that we, we don't oppose the two and a half ongoing if that's where council chooses to go.
And if you did a lump payment, what would be considered mid-year? What would be the options for a mid-year?
So I think that to, and part of the conversation that the Vice Mayor and Lori just had, if we did a two and a half one time payment now, we could consider that if we're labeling it something, the merit increase. And then we could mid-year make the two and a half percent market adjustment, say effective January 1st. And that way, once we have a better sense of the economy and, and what the reality of what we're experiencing is going to be, we'd be in a better position to make that ongoing commitment. And we could still at that time, label it and apply it like a market, you know, a market condition. Now, of course, you do the math and two and a half, and two and a half is five. And so that is, you know, that is a larger increase than what our represented groups were looking at as a package. And we would have to defer some of our other potential benefit enhancements, like a deferred comp until future years to do that type of approach.
That's, I think, what I was trying to get at, if that's a possibility. So that would work mathematically, that would work out for-
Correct. I think the deferred comp or some of those other ideas we had would wait till future, future years.
You know, I'd be curious on, on the actual employee. I know when I was probably in the front lines, depending on what salary range I was in, you know, if I was in the 50 or 60 or 70,000 range, I would rather have the lump sum, especially in today's times, only because 2.5% would go farther than the 2.5% on my salary each, every two weeks. But I can appreciate where the Vice Mayor's coming from too, because you don't want to fall too far behind. So I'll go whatever the majority wants on here. I'm just telling you from a personal perspective, just like the check that they were giving out on the stimulus thing. It gets a little better than a little bit each time, just like now they're talking about the, what is it, the social security dropping that 6% down, that little bit each time, you know, as opposed to one lump. Well, whatever the others want to go. But I, I think with the revisit in January, if we were looking at two and a half and you had a total, that might address some of the market that the Vice Mayor is concerned about. But I can go either way. But I can tell you personally, and again, it would be nice to know what the view of the employees were. Personally, I would prefer the lump, but that's just me personally.
Brandon?
Yeah, I, I think there's pros and cons for both, but I think long-term for the employee, I think the, I think the 2.5 ongoing probably better in the long-term for them. I mean, I know a lump would be good, but then, then that's gone pretty quick, depending on what they, what, what they spend it on or what they use it on. So, and like I said, we'll fall behind in it as well. And it'll also give us a, the lump is right up, we'll hit, hit that all in one shot as opposed to, it'll be spread out throughout the whole year. So I wonder if it will, for budgeting purposes as well, if our, yeah, it just might spread it out so we're not hitting a, a great, if we, all the money's due right away as opposed to spread out throughout the year. If we are shortfall and then the economy starts coming back later in that fiscal year, then maybe it'll look better for us as we're, as we're going forward as well. But, no, yeah, I, I think there's pros and cons for both. So, but I think I'm leaning towards the, the ongoing to their base, because I think long-range that'll be better for them.
I was just going to add, from a cash flow perspective, Lori, do you have any concerns?
From a cash flow perspective, we don't, the city doesn't have any concerns about, from a cash flow perspective in terms of making that payment in July versus spreading it out. If you'll recall, our financial policies already have us pay extra into the public safety retirement funds. And the cash flow is something that we use all the cash and all the funds to manage. And we are selling some bonds and things like that, that will put a lot of cash in our pockets for things like the surface water plant, that it's not, you know, it's, it's, then it's just cash, it's not necessarily what fund it's in.
I just want to follow-
Over here.
You know, Brandon brings up, brings up the right point, which is the, the, this 2%, this 2.5% goes into, it goes into that accumulated pension benefit for the employee at the end of their career. So to Joe's point, I just started, I'm at the bottom end of my pay, pay range, yeah, I want a check today. 25 years from now or 20 years from now, I'm going to receive that 2.5% benefit times 20 years worth at the end. So in the long run, it's always better to, to get it that way. And it helps us maintain our market position, which is why I've been pushing, you know, so strongly for it. And the, the idea of, well, we're, we're uncertain, but we are talking about a, a half a billion dollar budget with 26 new positions. If we're waiting for something, I don't know that $900,000 is the thing that we should hold, that we should be holding back on. Maybe it's some of these other positions and, or some of the other hundreds of millions of dollars that we should be, if, we should be moving our, our employees forward in, in their market and, and let them go through. And if the financial implication is essentially a wash, then let's not, they're already different, let's not make it even worse. That's my only position. And then I want to come back at the middle of the point, middle part of the year or whenever it's appropriate, to talk about the deferred comp and some of the other things that are in that nearly 5% increase that the represented folks get. We just, we can't let our unrepresented people fall behind in, in any of it. And if we, if we do, then shame on us. And quite honestly, they ought to rally together and become represented because clearly you get a, a larger, a larger push that way. And I don't think we want to create that. And I don't think we wanted to when we started meet and confer, and I don't think we want to now that we're two or three contracts in.
Yes, Sherry?
And I, I kind of go back to your, your hybrid version, that I think that solves both issues. It keeps us at market, but it just starts this summer, but it's still at market for, forever. It's not, you don't lose a year. Or whenever it's reviewed first of the year, you know? And then the, give them something upfront, which goes to what Joe, because I remember same thing when I was a city employee and you got your, your raise and you'd be like, oh, it's a dollar 25.
Yeah.
You know? And, and so I go just with everything that's going on right now, that people would need the cash upfront, but I don't, I think with the hybrid plan that the city manager was talking about is a good way to make sure we don't fall behind. I think it serves both goals. And I think it probably serves the employees the best. I, I do like that plan.
Other comments? Molly?
Well, I'll go along with what everyone wants. However, I do want to have the conversation, what, in March or, not March, this is April, right? Or May, later in the year, whenever we're going to talk about the deferred comp or something to, to bring them up. If we can't give them a 5% increase, and it's going to be a 2.5, then we need to think about adding something else to try to bring them up so that they're somewhat even. There shouldn't be that much disparity between them, I don't think. Our employees are the most important people for us and we need to be fair with them.
Laura?
This is a really interesting conversation when you, like I said, you can see both sides. I know when I worked for Phoenix, the disparity between the sworn and civilian was always an issue. And by increasing the, the base, I mean, that, that does help to shorten that gap. It's, it's, I also think about is we have turnover and we're hiring new people, it also adds an increase to the range as well in terms of attracting new talent. So as we've molded over, I, I think both would work, but there, there could be some greater advantages to spreading it out.
Yes, Joe?
You know, like I mentioned before, I'll go whatever the majority wants to. I was just talking about me personally, in today's environment and where I might be in the range, somebody there that's looking, like Bill has mentioned, ready to retire or close to retirement is obviously going to pay off from a retirement standpoint. Those who got three or four years in and have another 20 to go, probably want the cash in their hand now. So whatever the majority wants, the bottom line is going to be the same. But I could see the other side, if they're entry level or only been in five years or whatever, and they've got another 20 years to put in, just like the stimulus check was, you know, additional cash in your hand upfront could come in, especially in today's environment to pay for a lot. But I could support either way because the, the bottom line, it's the same amount. It's whether it's going to be stretched out or whether they're going to get it upfront. So I go with the majority.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to try to summarize, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add, ma'am.
Well, I like lump sum, but that's at the times that we're going through economically and the number of jobs that have been lost. I just feel that way. But again, I've never worked for the city, I've never been on that. So I'm, my ears open for everybody's opinion. But I have heard people talk about getting raised and they tell you how many cents they got, how many, you know, small amount, and then saying, big deal, big raise. So, you know, that, that conversation goes on. So I'll be ready to listen more before I make a decision. Bill?
So if, if we didn't have this pandemic, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So this whole, this whole, oh, I only get a few cents, we've never, we've never considered that because that's the way it is every single year. And so that really, I'm just, I would just implore to everyone to think about it, that's really not a factor because that's the way that it is. A two and a half or a 3% raise is only a few, a few dollars every pay, you know, there's 26 pay or 24, I think, paychecks. So it's only a few dollars per paycheck, you know, like, so that the big deal, like, oh, I got 3% big deal. But that 3% year after year after year turns into a big, a really big deal later on. And I think the, if we weren't in the, the pandemic scenario, would we even be talking about a lump sum? I mean, we've never, we've never underpaid our employees where we said, geez, we really need to give everybody another 500 or 600 bucks in cash upfront and then we're going to do the rest. We've never talked about that. But that's never been, never been something that we've, that we've considered. And I would just suggest that we pay, we pay very well. That's one of the things that we, we use as a marketing tool and a, and a recruitment tool, is to, to bring the best employees here because we pay them very well. So we're not straddling at the bottom of the pay, we're not at the bottom of the, we're not at the bottom of the market, we're not, oh, thank God, somebody showed up to take that job. And we are not in that situation at all. So our employees, I, I'm fairly confident are not shopping at the food bank for food, unless they've done something in their lives, but it's not because they're not making enough. So let's protect them going forward. This isn't stimulus money, it's not one time money because for every person who you, you know, said, oh, great, it's only a couple of bucks, there are some people that are, that are moaning and groaning that it was only $1,200 per person. I mean, to them, it's not enough money. And, but we haven't, we're not laying our employees off, we're not, and granted, some of their spouses may have suffered from that, but that $500 or $600 is a one time shot, it's in, it's for the month of July and then it's gone. And I realize it's only a few dollars, but that few dollars a year from now or three years from now or 20 years from now, is going to be worth a heck of a lot more than 600 bucks.
Any other comments? Sherry?
How much is it? I know when we talked in our small groups, you figured out what it was for the lower paid employees to get a, a one bump. What, what is that amount that we're talking about?
So the calculations that we had done, looking at the, the pay range of the employees at the lower end of the scale, new in their career. I believe the, the total check was about $1,200. It is pensionable, so after you take out ASRS withdrawal and the mandatory taxes, it was about $800 was going to be the minimum payment to the employees at that.
And so part of that does go to the pension, so they don't lose the pension portion with regard to that, so it's not built in. Yeah, I, I still go back to, I, I think your hybrid plan will keep us on the pay thing, it gets you the 2.5% from maybe January on, so you're not losing anything because it doesn't build every year. So we have kept 2021 budget as a pay increase and then we've still helped them out because I, you know, if we weren't a pandemic, we would be funding all these CIP projects, we would be doing a lot of other things that we're not doing. And we are. And we're in a really tough time right now and it's not, I mean, we don't have the numbers and we are so fortunate that we've had such good leadership that we are not cutting employees like many cities are, we are not looking at the 25% every budget. But we are in a, a different, a new normal. And unfortunately, this new normal means, you know, there are lines around the corner at the food banks, you know? People are waiting hours to get to food, people that never had to before. And I think it's going to get worse because we're not laying off, but as soon as these budgets comes in, U of A has already furloughed people for the next year, 25%, I think they decided to take so many days off. You know, you're going to see other governments start to cut. So you're going to see this, you know, these large corporations that have been paying are going to start laying people off. It's, this is, they're looking at a 20 to 25%. So I would like to do the hybrid thing. I think it gets them to almost a 5% that's equivalent, equivalent to our, and I totally see Bill's point. And that's why I think this incorporates his i- idea as well, to keep our market and keep us there, but we also are helping our people who need it now. And I don't think a lot of them are going to tell you they need help right now. I know some people that I've never thought would have needed help and-
Oh.
They need help.
It's rampant right now.
Yeah. So I, I think it's a lot worse and I think it's right now still, I want to say bubbling because people are being able to do certain things with banks and stuff, like even retail defer for a period of time. Those are going to come due. And I think, you know, anything we can do to help stimulate the economy and stimulate, help our people, in a way, it kind of is a stimulus check because we're going to help our people be able to afford things that they may not be able to afford in their household. And we don't know what's going on in everyone's household, but I think that also keeps the goal of keeping our market where it needs to be so we can get the best people- Where it needs to be so we can get the best people here. So I appreciate the city manager's plan. But if, obviously if I'm outvoted and wants to go the other way, as long as we get them something, I am very happy.
Well, we're not voting on this tonight, so we have time, right?
Not voting, although direction I think would be appreciated as we put together the, the final budget and, you know, if, if I could just.
I just want to remind you all, this is still a work session.
But I was trying to count those. Um, you know, I, just as a, I think it's worth repeating that every version of the budget that we've worked on. Until the very last version included an ongoing increase for our employees. We do think that is the, the best model, the, the sustainable model. What you see represented here was that reaction to, we don't know how bad. The recession might be. If it is council's desire to stay on track, we are adaptable. We have great reserves. We have great financial policies. If in six months we see that this is, you know, worse than we've projected. We still have time and the ability to, to adapt. So. You know, what we were trying to do is find the silver lining in the one-time payment option. That, that could be something that would be beneficial to our team members right now, but we do believe from a compensation standpoint. That the, the preferred model, if we have faith in the budget. In our economy, in our local economy, that the ongoing is, is the ideal scenario. So again, I just wanted to, to clarify from an HR perspective. That's where we started. That's where we wanted to be. If we wanted to take a step back and be more conservative, that's where the approach of a one-time payment came up. So. So truly we're not vested in, in an outcome here and it's been great conversation, but I would appreciate if there was. Uh, it sounded to me like we were more leaning towards the ongoing as we were going around. I didn't know if we wanted to confirm that, but that's what I was sensing.
Yeah, that's kind of my impression too.
Any more discussion? I'm seeing everybody make faces, so.
Yeah, Wally's looking at me like.
Real interesting watching you all.
May I?
You may.
So. You know, I, I, I think if we're, if we're really. I shouldn't say really, if we're confident in the budget that we've just gone through. And that we've been conservative enough in what we've done, then we shouldn't, this is not the place for us to hesitate. We should be hesitating elsewhere in this budget and not at this two point five, ongoing or not. It's. I, I just, I think the messaging is, is, and I hate to even use that phrase messaging, but I, I think the. I, I think that's not the place to do it. For whatever reason, I decided that this was my passion project. I mean, if I'm going to have one of, this is a good one to have, I guess.
I couldn't tell that, Bill.
Oh, my goodness.
But it, it, and it, you know, usually when we're having this budget discussion, it's about me going, where can we cut? What can we cut? But I haven't, I haven't done that and I'm actually pushing for the ongoing, the ongoing component, but. I, I'm not, I'm not worried about these seven people council. I'm worried about the next group. Who's going to have to deal with the, we fell behind three years from now or four years from now, when it's a different set of people sitting here. And I was appreciative having come on to council. For the decisions that the previous councils had made. I want to make sure, and we've done such a great job of looking into the future that I wanted. I think that's why I'm passionate about it. I want to make sure that we're setting up future councils for success. Not that this recommendation is not doing that, but. If we have a choice, that's, I, I want to push in that direction and, and do, do the very best. I think instinctively, we all would love to have said, oh, you guys did a survey of the employees and this was the response? That would have been, you know, that would be great because then we'd all be able to sleep tonight knowing we did what the majority of the folks wanted to. So. I think we've got to go with our gut and, and again, you're in how I feel about it. So, thanks.
You're welcome. Just last comments?
I'm not sure what Bill said, but I'm with Bill.
What, what I, to recap, what I'm.
Well, write that down.
Go ahead, Julie.
So we will proceed with moving forward to the final budget with a two and a half percent ongoing for the non-represented staff. And then as we gather information and the months begin to pass, we will come back mid-year. With a, a suggestion if it's, well, we'll come back mid-year anyway because we'll be talking about the budget. But if there's the opportunity to, to fill in the remainder of this difference to bring full parity, that would be our intent.
Oh, thank you. That's reassuring. That kind of takes it for all sides here to, to really come to a conclusion. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for your contribution. We felt you were very excited about this. It, it definitely showed your personality.
But it's different than in the past, huh?
It was all good. Go ahead.
Alrighty, so supplemental. So. We, you know, the, the, the framework is we're recommending must-do supplementals at this point in time. And so the first must-do supplemental is opening the recreation campus. This supplemental does allow the recreation campus, all three aspects of it to open with the original operating hours. That we intended to open the facilities under. So you'll have access to all the facilities, the walking track, the gym and all of those types of things. We'll be transferring the services that we plan to transfer from other locations to this, this location. What it does not include that was in the department's original request. Was adding additional new programs and services. So at this point in time, we don't feel like those are a must-do. And the department would be able to come back, you know, next year in the budget process to ask to increase those service levels or later in the year. I do have one correction that I want to make for you here. The recreation center operations were reflecting six point eight positions. That was the original request. We took out the money for one position, but we forgot to take it out of the position count. So we're actually going to be dropping the full-time position count by one. As we come forward. It's no change of the money, no change in what was intended to be done and we just missed that, that piece of the change. That's fine with me.
I didn't see that. Brandon?
Oh, I saw a question. So, and so seven out of those seventeen positions that you're talking about are, are converting from part-time to full-time, correct?
That, that, not of these. This is new positions being added just for the recreation campus.
Okay.
So the next slide gets to what you're asking about, which is the other must-do supplementals are. In already existing parks, programs and services or maintenance activities. We have a situation where as ti- as schedules have changed and, and we're delivering programs in different ways. We have six positions that are part-time currently. That we really believe should be treated as full-time employees or full-time positions. So we're recommending converting those six part-time to full-time. It doesn't change the position count. It just moves them from the part-time side of the equation to the full-time side. And, but it does have a cost because then they become eligible for pension and health benefits.
Brandon, go ahead.
Were they doing the same amount of hours as a part-time person versus a full-time person?
They were, yes, it's a situation where it would be appropriate for the city to treat these individuals as if they're full-time. They've basically been, they don't get the benefit of vacations.
Like contractors.
Sick leave. So it's, they are part-time employees who are essentially assigned to a full-time.
So we're not going to get double the hours out of them?
No, it's, it's, it's two thousand and eighty hours of time.
Because they're working more essentially, it's the same amount of hours, okay.
Any other?
And.
Go ahead.
And then, so that, and then the other thing in the recommendation is that we are including the cost to assume. That the ambulance service would begin on July one. So it means we're adding the on, the one-time equipment and supplies as well as bringing on those employees and getting them trained a few months before July. That does assume that there are no, nobody contests our current application to provide that service. If for some reason that was contested and it was delayed, we wouldn't spend the money until we knew when that program would begin.
Wally?
So Lori, going forward, if we do start the ambulance program in twenty twenty-one. I would assume that that part would be included in fire budget. It will not be separated out again. It should be part of their big budget, right?
Yes, once, once the ambulance program begins, it will be part of the fire department base budget.
Very good.
So, but we, this is only part of your funding, so we would have to add the full year funding moving forward.
And then if we don't start, something happens and it just won't be spent.
Correct. We would, essentially, essentially we had already, you already authorized the positions and this money several years ago. And we decided that we would take it out of the base budget. We didn't think that it was likely that we might start service in July one, but now. Does appear it's possible.
Good.
So that's why we're adding the money back in at this point in time.
Thank you.
Bill?
We already have this money set aside though, right?
We ha- we made a decision. That it was because it had been being carried over. We try not to carry things over again and again and again. So when we started the budget process, we decided we were going to not carry it over anymore. And we didn't think it would come in as an FY twenty-one need. So we were planning on just refunding it in the future and putting it in the operating costs set aside. So it, so it, in essence, we, the money that was budgeted in this year for the one-time costs is now sitting in fund balance. Because we took it out of the estimate and we're respending it next year. So it's kind of like a carryover.
That's, that's what I thought. We had created this capital fund. You know, I hate to keep using the word sinking fund, but basically that's what it was so that we could. We, we hold it, held it, ongoing money and, and, and moving forward. I, I guess if we find out. In September that no one contested and we're ready to go, we're probably looking at. Hiring process and maybe a January start, get them six months ahead before this kicks over. Is that what this is? Because you're talking about not starting until July one of next year, which is the FY twenty-two budget.
Right, but the, what this allows us to do is if it would start on July one, we would already need the equipment. We would already need the employees on board. So I believe this is three months of salaries, assuming we'd go out, we'd recruit, we'd bring them in, we'd train them. So that when the service started, we could start it on the day we're supposed to start service. And if you'll remember that, the, it's not so much in the operating costs set aside the way some of the other things are because this is a revenue recovered program. So the assumption is that in the long run, its revenues will pay its costs.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't laugh either. You didn't hear me laugh.
We covered that one. Mayor? Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I, I just wondered, this might be actually a Rory question. What, what is the timeline that they have to contest by? Do we have a timeline even in place yet or is it still up in the air?
My understanding, last update I saw, they were still looking at the applications, still at staff review and after that. The, any parties who wanted to contest would have to file their, their notice, but we have not been notified of any contest on it yet. And then if it were contested, I think the timelines we previously gave council, that could be up to a six to nine month process.
Okay, so it's definitely not going to be this year, unlikely.
Well, the July one date is probably the best case scenario.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Alrighty. And, and then I mentioned earlier, it's not on this slide because, that we are working with the fire department to determine. What additional amounts we need to add to their budget to pay for the utilities and the facilities and landscape maintenance at the new fire stations. So again, here's the position changes. And so we're adding, this says twenty-six point four. It'll actually be twenty-five point four. Because we will be reducing that recreation campus count in the full-time column by one with the correction that we're making.
We certainly are a growing city.
Yes, we are.
Amazing.
It is amazing.
When we first came on council, so. Go ahead. It's good.
Alrighty. So that, that makes up what's in the ongoing part of the budget, the day-to-day operations. There's five point nine million dollars in general fund one time. That includes one point nine million dollars in one-time supplementals. And four million dollars in carryovers from this year for projects that are in process, but not, not yet complete. In terms of the must-do one-time supplementals, we have. We're recommending that we fund the development-related areas, temporary staffing needs to meet the current high levels of activity. We're recommending we fund that for three months as one time. And that we then kind of monitor where they are, monitor the activity and monitor the revenue and revisit with you. After, you know, a few months into the fiscal year to determine if we should increase the amount of funding available there. At that point in time, we would have additional revenue if, if the workloads are sustained. And then also we'll have the contin- the additional special contingency as another place.
Brandon?
I saw a question on the seventy-fifth anniversary. I saw in page sixteen to twenty-seven, sixteen to twenty-seven here. Is it, is that where you're counting the, you're converting the six people from full-time to, part-time to full-time? I see the one-time costs of about two hundred thousand. Then you have six full-time people for the seventy-fifth anniversary. It's like a one-time event.
If that's where it is, we have a flipped a digit or slipped a line. There should be a line that's just related to.
Oh, okay. In, that's going down as increased part-time.
So if you look at, you're right, there is, the dollar amounts are on the wrong line. Good, good catch. So it looks like we've moved the. That is, the description is not what's in the shown there. So the. Line item that says seventy-fifth anniversary is actually the dollar amounts associated and the positions associated with that, those conversions. And I don't off the top of my head know what the seventy-fifth anniversary, the seventy-fifth anniversary is. I believe a hundred and five thousand dollar.
A hundred and five.
Yep. Yep, so the dollar amount's right. There's got the positions in the wrong spot. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
This is a gen- a generic question and. I have to apologize for my ignorance. I had no idea that the park ranger program was a pilot thing this year until I read it in this, in this particular budget. I thought it was just, we were, I thought it was automatic. Do we have, and this is a question for later, benchmarks, performance measurement? Can we get some kind of a report on how the park ranger program is working? Can we get something later on? I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it shouldn't be here. I realize this is a budget discussion. This is just future info.
Yeah, Vice Mayor will be happy to do that. And, and this is a new addition from, this is a recent addition to the list of must-do supplementals. It actually came up when we began discussing some of the responses to COVID and the. And who would be in the parks to deal with some of that. And so that's why we init- we recommended it as one time. This was originally funded as one time.
Right.
And so it did not make that must-do list, so we'll definitely come back to you with some statistics on the.
Yeah, I think it would just be great, great information. I would kind of expect that for twenty twenty-two. This would probably, probably show a conversion to full-time FTEs. If the program comes out as successful, but I think it'd be nice to get, to get an update. Like I said, I had no idea this was a one-time pilot. And maybe I was the only one, but thanks.
Any other question? Go ahead, Laura.
Does the temporary staffing for development support also include some support for Ekdev? I just remember during the baseball events, discussions about the support needed to keep up with the inquiries and phone calls and things.
Thank you for that question. So yes, during last budget cycle, council approved two new FTEs for that division. And we also have had. And we also have had temporary dollars allocated and have provided administrative support and such with those. So yes, as we come forward with even mid-year changes to the development continuum, we always ensure that economic development needs are also included. Thank you for asking.
I think you can go ahead.
Alrighty, so the, oops, dang it. So that, so, and I didn't point out, and the supplementals are in tab five in the book, and there you'll find the requests by the departments and then the recommendation. If the recommendation varies from what was requested, there is a little sentence describing the basis of the recommendation. So as you look through this and if you have other questions, please let us know. And then I, I wanted to go in and talk to you, one of the, we told you, one of the frameworks for building this budget was to build in the capacity to absorb additional, the uncertainty and unknowns here. So the, the list that I just went through that shows you the recommended base budget and the supplementals, as well as the CIP, does not spend all of the general fund resources that could be spent in this budget or planned for spending in this budget. And so what we're proposing in here, we'll just show you, that we're showing you the fund balance, the revenue, and then removing those expenses. We're showing that we have a $16.4 million contingency, which is the 15% kind of rainy day that's called for by policy. After all these expenses, that leaves us another $5.1 million of general fund resources that have not been programmed. And we're recommending that be treated as a special contingency. It would be set, tracked separately from the balance of the 16.4 million. And if we make adjustments mid-year, that would be one of the first places that we would go to look for those resources. And if the, we would adjust the regular contingency, if we have 5 million more in ongoing revenues, technically we should increase the regular contingency. So we'd probably take that out of there as well when we went through that. But that's what we're recommending is when we looked at the absolute must dos, this is where, where we were.
Do you have comments on that? I think it's great, security. You're smart business, thank you.
Okay. Just real quick, go over the other two funds that kind of directly impact the general fund. That includes the ballpark fund. And here you'll see resources are equal to expenditures and the primary reason for that is on the resource side of the chart, which is on the left side, there is a blue transfer from the general fund, I'm sorry, the purple is the transfer from the general fund. For the debt service is $10.2 million is the purple. And then the balance, the blue part of the pie is $3.3 million that's being transferred to support the operating costs for that fund.
Question.
Joe?
Does that include what happened, I guess, this year? Because I always remember the operating was about 2 million short. Is it growing?
The, this is the first time we've broken out the, the debt service separate from the operating part of the subsidy for you this way. The, when I came, what I was told is the subsidy was expected to range from 3 to $3.5 million. And so it, it's in that range. But yeah, their revenue would not be growing at the same rate as their expenses. Ticket prices since I've, about in the last five, six years, ticket prices I think have only been changed once since I've been here. So as their, their costs go up faster than their expenses, the other thing is, one of the big things in here that will probably help that with that more, more clearly, is there is a $1.6 million capital project in their budget right now. And so that also has to be funded from the general fund.
What's that, what's, the 1.6 is?
That wall stabilization project. And so if you took the 1.6 out of there, it'd be substantially less.
Now, how is that shown? I, I know we have, what is it, about a million, million something for the, what is it, the Indians for that loan? You know, when they did the improvement on their facilities?
Yep.
In which the money comes back to us and the fact is, is ticket receipts. I assume this year that's going to be short, so we've got to bill them because the tickets receipts won't be there. But how does that show up in this graph?
So the, there, the, it is included in the debt service. And then on the revenue side, it is in the non-spring training revenue, it's in the other revenue. So the other revenue has an amount equal to the debt service payment that's coming from the Indians.
And when do we usually bill for that difference, which I suspect didn't cover?
We would typically bill after we've done all the reconciliation for spring training. The last time I looked at actuals, it looked like they hadn't quite finished the reimbursements to, you know, where they're paying back people for their tickets. And so the reconciliation was, is not done in the March actual, so I would assume it will be sometime in May when we send that billing out.
Okay, I, I'd just be curious, don't need to know it now, but what that shortfall would, would have been as a result of the cancellations. I suspect it, it grew quite a bit because of the short, but I don't need it right now, but, okay.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
And then HERF that we talked about also, where we're, that is also supported by the general fund. It's just simply that we've always spent more on streets related activity than, than the HERF fund provides us. No, no significant change in what's going on there. And then as you just kind of review the, we do have the general funded, supported asset management plans, and they support the replacement of general fund assets. And so we do have plans for fire, fleet, parks, the ballpark capital replacement plan, which is part of the MLB agreements that we, that, that calls out certain replacements, traffic signals and technology hardware. And so as a reminder, these, we have 10 year plans that underlie these, these fund, these funds for the planned replacement of these assets. And the way we fund these is we essentially take one tenth of what that 10 year expense is, and that's a transfer from the general fund into those funds. And you will see that in this case, we're showing the beginning balances, what's coming from the general fund, which is about $8.9 million. And then what's planned, according to those plans, to be spent next year. We're generally showing that the fund balance is growing in those funds because in the future, there are some larger dollar items coming, such as when a pumper has to be replaced, you end up having to fund that for a couple, you know, in advance so that when we get there, we can deal with those larger years. So this is consistent with the current policy and practice.
Real quick, Mayor.
Joe?
Refresh me memory on police and fire costs when they worked the stadium. Is money transferred out of the police and fire budgets over into the stadium so we get a true cost of operations?
That, it is not reflected in the budget. That is something that's done after the fact, so it is not, it is not reflected in the budget because it is budgeted in police and fire and then transferred over there. And I'll have to confirm, that transfer will look very different this year.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm just kind of curious because that adds to that cost of our actual general fund subsidy on that. So it'd be, if you can, I'd like to know what that true cost is. For the ballpark. I know we're just mixing it from one pot to the other, but that is a cost of operating the ballpark, so I'd like to know what that is.
And then we'll wrap this up by letting you know that in the tab two in here, we've listed all the financial policies and there's a statement with regard to compliance that the city manager's budget represents. I just want to call out a couple of things here. Number one, I want to highlight that there's nothing in this budget that's being proposed that would say, gee, maybe we shouldn't make the contingency 15%. So all of the financial policies and conservative practices are adhered to in this budget. So we're showing the, the proposed budget and being in full compliance with the financial policies. Just want to call out that yes, we did use $5.1 million for construction sales tax as ongoing, and that's consistent with the decision that you made earlier in the year. And was based on the lowest five year average in the prior 10 years of construction sales tax. The general fund debt service, we've just, this year, in some years, this ends up to where if we include the ballpark debt, it's actually higher than 10%. We believe the spirit of the budget tran- of the budget policy is that the general fund only is 1.3% of revenue, which is below the 10%. And it happens this year that even including the ballpark, it's below 10% as well. And then the last thing in the important financial policy is the importance of matching ongoing revenues with ongoing, ongoing costs with ongoing revenues. So this is just a quick snapshot to show you that as recommended, this budget does not use all of the ongoing revenues for ongoing expenses, which causes more being available for one time purposes. On this slide, you can also see the operating costs set aside concept, which is we shift, we spend ongoing dollars on one time items as a way to prepare for future operating costs. And so that is also fully within the practice we've been following in the past to create that set aside. And that's all the presentation I have, so happy to answer any other questions or have further discussion.
Any final questions? Yes, Sherry.
As a really question, I just want to thank you for all your hard work and a really well done presentation, especially because you didn't have all the data that you normally do. So I, I do appreciate the budget and the city manager and the whole staff for putting this together, so thank you.
Thank you, and you know, normally I have a crew sitting behind me and they can't be here today, but I do, I do, I do want to, you know, remind you that there's a whole crew of people sitting behind me getting this done and, and as well as the departments. So I just get the good fortune of being able to talk to you about it.
Bill?
Lori, I want to echo that. Year after year, I've always been the thorn in your, in your seat, but...
Oh, and you're admitting this publicly?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Wally said she agreed with me, and now I'm admitting something the world must be coming to an end.
But you haven't voted on it yet.
I voted in favor of it last year, I will probably do the same thing this year. But I, I think all the pain and suffering over the last few years has really turned into what, what we have and, and where we're at. And I really appreciate the explanation and, and the continued striving for a very conservative approach to our budgeting. Because it's, I think, over the last five years anyway, it's been really easy to, to go, you know, if we just stretched a little bit more. And now today, I, we see the benefit of having not done that. But that, so I just want to acknowledge you, your leadership, your team, you know, in the, in the budget office, and of course, that comes under the direction of Doug, which then comes under the direction of Julie. But everyone's done, done a great job. And, and this year will be very challenging in a number of, in a number of ways. But at any point in time, I have never been more confident in our city in its ability to deal with it. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Any other, Joe?
No, I like, just to echo it, I, I think when you look back, when we start putting some of these policies in place, even like Bill mentioned earlier, the sinking fund for the ballpark, because we did not know when we were going to get the money, and it's still a little lack, you know, a little, little low what we're getting. But still, some of those decisions we make put us in an excellent position in the, in the situation we are right now. So, and I appreciate considering on, being a little conservative on this budget, setting money aside just in case, you know, it picks back up. We have a little even buffer in there, you know, as well. So again, kudos to the approach. I think we've got some very, very strong fiscal policies in here on the conservative side, and it does us well, you know, as we go forward. So again, thank your staff. I know they're there in spirit, even though they're not there behind you, okay? So tell them thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Lori.
Well, I think we'll say ditto to all those we talk about. It's, it's always a joy and great confidence when you come before us. So I know you do the right thing, you do it the right way, your team is excellent. So we really are appreciative. So I want to give you a hand of rock, applause tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, counseling, comments, commendation reports to the group? No? Julie, do you have any messages?
Well, thank you, Julie, you did a good job too. We don't want to leave you out, you're a great part of this, so fantastic. So no further business, I'm going to adjourn this. Meeting adjourned.